Good morning and welcome to the Los Angeles City Council. Today is March 10, 2006, and we are meeting an hour earlier than usual, just after nine o'clock here in the John F. Rau Council Chambers Room 340 on the third floor of City Hall downtown. We also invite folks to testify via our remote facility in Van Nuys. Today, I understand, we have a couple people out there already, but it is a way that we can remotely hear testimony from individuals who would like to comment on matters before the council's agenda. We have right now eight members present, and I want to thank council members Gruel, Han, Labange, Perry, Rosendahl, Weiss, Wesson for being here. We have a number of colleagues that are excused today are already in Washington DC where a number of us will be lobbying Congress for resources here in Los Angeles, but that's Councilmember Parks. Zine and Reyes are already gone. So we'd like to invite Councilmember Cardenas, Padilla, and Smith to join us, and we will have a quorum as soon as we have 10 members, which is two-thirds of the 15 in what we need by law to start our meeting. Just as a matter of information, we are being broadcast live on Channel 35, LA City View, which all members of the city who have cable, sorry, all residents of the city who have cable can watch, but for those of you who do not have access to cable system, we are available online through a webcast at www.lacity.org, our city's homepage, where there's a wealth of information there about the workings of government and city council, the mayor, and your elected officials. You are also being broadcast on council phone, which is a way you can call in and listen to the meetings of Los Angeles City Council, as well as our committee proceedings as well. As soon as we have Mr. Cardenas, Mr. Padilla, and Mr. Smith here, we will begin the meeting as promptly as possible. Thank you. We have Mr. Padilla. Thank you. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Cardenas, Gruel, Han, Weezer, Labange, Padilla, Parks, Perry, Reyes, Rosendahl, Smith, Weiss, Wesson, Zine, Garcetti, 10 members present in the quorum, Mr. President.
Thank you very much. First order of business.
Approval of the minutes.
Mr. Smith moves. Mr. Weiss seconds. If there's no objection, that'll be unanimous vote, and the minutes are approved.
Commendatory resolutions for approval.
Mr. Padilla moves. Mr. Labange seconds. If there's no objection, that's also unanimous vote, and that'll be approved.
Mr. President, this is the time for comments from the public on items not on council's agenda.
Okay. Why don't we start out in Van Nuys at our remote facility? We have two cards there in Van Nuys, and I'd like to invite Becky Bendixson and Ralph Kroy to each speak for two minutes. I know there's not a timer out there, so I will let you know when the two minutes is up, and we welcome your public testimony today, Los Angeles City Council. Go ahead, Ms. Bendixson.
Good morning, Mr. President and council members.
Good morning.
My name is Becky Bendixson. I'm a resident of Granada Hills. I was pleased to receive a call yesterday from Mary Edwards, a good neighbor to all, be they human, animal, or urban forest, and a good steward of this earth, doing all she can to protect the environment for future generations. Mary is at home recuperating from an illness and asks that I read her testimony to you today. I am here today to represent the many members of the North Valley Coalition. We realize that the public comment has been closed for the BFI contract, so I will address only issues outside the scope of the contract. We believe that if a youth dies of gunshot wounds on a street in South Los Angeles, or when a cement processing facility causes asthma in the lungs of a child in Sunland, or when a river loses its recharge capabilities, or when people live in barely affordable garages, we are all diminished. We believe the city cannot change as long as the proponent of a project is allowed to prepare the EIR for their project, as long as city employees are allowed to return after only one year to lobby the staff and city officials, as long as the city adopts overriding considerations as a vehicle to void any EIR findings of significance that cause environmental destruction, as long as a malleable Department of Planning works consistently with developers and searches for ways to satisfy them through finding loopholes and changing community plans, as long as money comes to candidates and staff through charity fundraisers and subcontractors' friendly donations, as long as commissioners are allowed to meet with project proponents or opponents without disclosing those meetings publicly when the issue comes before them, as long as all the key conditions of a permit can be dropped or changed at will without any process or public participation by the planning department, as long as each council district only cares about its own issues. When the community around Sunshine Dump is again sacrificed for corporate greed, will you take another canopy from the tray at an upscale mixer and rationalize that?
Thank you.
Oh, it's too bad about the BFI thing, but we didn't have a choice.
Thank you. If I can ask you to conclude. Thank you very much. We appreciate your testimony. And Ralph Kroy is our next speaker out in Van Nuys as well. Welcome, Mr. Kroy. Go ahead. Thank you.
My name is Ralph Kroy. The process of contract approval before the council seems to be extremely political on the issues that I have witnessed. The members of the council are more interested in their council district than what is good for the city as a whole. Councilmatic districts are like little protected fiefdoms. The good of the city and the citizens as a whole seem to come in second to the fiefdoms. The city of the whole should be the first priority. A prime and vivid example of this is the contract for waste disposal. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Kroy. We'll now turn to public speaker cards that are here in City Hall, and I'd like to welcome Rebecca Broad forward, to be followed by Aracely Clatoya and Alberto Clatoya. Is Rebecca Broad? Oh, yeah, please, go ahead. It's, I'm sorry, it's just right in front of you. There you go. Ms. Han will assist you. Welcome.
Good morning. We're here to, good morning. We're here to support, save, and preserve the South Central Farmers. We would like to, one, see, excuse me, we would like to, one, nullify the contract with Ralph Horowitz. We would like to, two, take back the land by eminent domain, and, three, we would like to fundraise to buy back the land for our community. It would take me all day to talk about all the complex issues related to this 14-acre acre jewel in our city. So that's all I have to say at the moment. I want to thank you so much for this opportunity, Los Angeles City Council members. Thank you.
Thank you very much, as well, for your testimony. Aracely Clatoya, Alberto Clatoya, and Dele Alaman, our next three speakers.
Good morning, City Council. My name is Aracely Clatoya, and I am a daughter of a South Central farmer. Well, let me remind you one more, that, one more thing. I came last weekend, and if I need to keep, I will do so until you guys get, get, all the farmers and the kids need to, need that green, the space of greenness on 41 in La Meta, but get into your mindset, we do not want no other, other place, but we want the space located on 41 in La Meta, and we, we need those 14 acres and demand. We have a right to protect our land. So how mu, how much money, City Council members, are you going to, going to donate for our garden? John Perry, you need to get out of the way, out of the way so that the city could buy the land. Thank you.
Thank you. Alberto Clatoya.
Good morning, City Council members. My name is Alberto Clatoya, a South Central farmer and a current East Los Angeles Community College student. I believe that this body is well-represented. It have, we have diverse ethnic groups here that are representing the city of Los Angeles. We have both female and male representatives, yet there's something missing. You have not heard the cries of the community. We have been attending City Council for about three years, and what have you done to save the South Central farm? When have you come publicly and said, "We're gonna fundraise to save the South Central farm"? We are here asking you once again to save this vital environment for our community. It already provides a lot of, you know the story. You know it provides oxygen, food, safety. What else does the city want? This is a project that should be emulated instead of being destroyed. We are here saying to you, we're not giving up. We want this for the community. It's beneficial. So I don't understand, just give me out of doubt, I don't know why you guys are not doing anything. Please, somebody respond to that. And to Greg Smith, why are you saying that you're tired of hearing this? It was a, 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 a closed, a backdoor deal. It was. Not once, not twice, not, but three times the Judge Crispel said, "Horowitz, you have no right to the property." So for you to say that, that is not true. And if you're tired of hearing us from us, then you should step up to the plate and meet the necessities of the community. South Central Farmers, feeding families, feeding friends, y aquí estamos, y no nos vamos.
Thank you very much. Dele Alaman.
On behalf of the international community for a Green LA, we are here again to remind the LA City Council that issues involving the South Central Farm have civil and human rights consequences, but particularly for today, I want to plead with Councilman Smith representing the 12th district to please show a little less of arrogance of power. On Wednesday, you literally told the poor farmers, pleading that their land should be saved. You told them to shut up. That is particularly, that is literally what you said. If you do believe that there was no backroom deal in which this land was transferred to the private developer, the media is waiting outside so that you can engage in the most civil and democratic process to respond to this issue. I hope, I hope that you will respect the protocol of this office, stop the subtle tactics of intimidation against the farmers, and show some humility in your conduct.
Randy Childs.
Eric Ruiz. I live in Lincoln.
Hold on, I'm sorry. I have all the cards, but Randy Childs is our next speaker. And then Soche Lujan. I'll make sure we get to all of them, sir.
My name is Randy Childs. I'm a teacher at Roosevelt High School and a member of the United Teachers Los Angeles House of Representatives, a body which just last week passed a motion in solidarity with the South Central Farmers, and I'm here to inform you of that, that the, the, the number of organizations that are coming around, hearing about the case of the South Central Farm, and showing their support for the farm, and support for its continuance, instead of the, instead of the warehouse being proposed by Mr. Horowitz, is growing and will continue to grow until the city does what it needs to do and, and, and actually take action in, in this case. Unfortunately, this, I'm speaking in, in the, in the capacity of public comment, and I'm speaking on a motion that's before the council, because the council does not have a motion related to the South Central Farm on its agenda today, and it's one, you know, and I think it's one of the most critical issues facing the city today. More organizations like mine are gonna continue to show their support and organize in favor of, of the farmers. More people are gonna start questioning the sweetheart deal that was made a few years ago with Mr. Horowitz by this very body, as recommended by City Attorney Delgado, which sold him back the land at, at a paltry price of $5.1 million, when he is now asking over $16 million for, for that very same land. The basis of that deal was Horowitz's claim that this land is not being used. In reality, if you visit the South Central Farm and you see what, what, what people are doing for their families, for their children, for their community, this is the best-used land in all of Los Angeles. This land is being used to feed children, to teach people, to teach children. As a teacher myself, this, this land has incredible educational value right now. That will be destroyed if it becomes a warehouse. It is in the interest of every citizen of Los Angeles that this, that this incredible community resource gets preserved as is and not turned into another ugly warehouse along the Alameda corridor. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Soche Lujan and Jesús Ramírez will be our next speaker after that, and then Candido Mares. Welcome.
Thank you. Good morning, City Council members. Mr. Smith, I'd like to actually direct this to you, sir. On Wednesday, I was actually here at the City Council meeting, though I did not speak. I'm a representative of the Chicano and Chicano Studies Alumni Association at California State University Dominguez Hills, and I've been here several times, and I'm speaking on behalf of the South Central Farmers. Unfortunately, while I was watching some of the farmers and other persons during public comments, I noticed that a majority of certain city council members were off having sidebars when they should have been faced this way exactly how they are, paying attention to the public comments. Mr. Smith, you were one of the people who had your chair turned with the back face to the public, and I'm sure if we could roll back tape, we would see that on tape. And I felt that was very rude and disrespectful to the public when they're trying to come to you, the taxpayers who pay your salary, coming to you, asking for help to save the South Central Farm. Please be more respectful of your constituents. They might not be in your district, but your actions speak louder than your words. As far as the South Central Farm goes, I would hope that with all the persons who have come and approached the City Council, that you would see how meaningful, how valuable this parcel of land is to the community. It is being utilized. It was taken from a barren, wasteful piece of land with broken glass and transformed by the community into something that is productive for the community. Do not take it away from them. Do not let it be taken away, and your voices should be the voices that are speaking up for the community. So far, there haven't been very many, but I'm hoping that all the city council members will take a vested interest in this.
Thank you very much.
Please save the South Central Farm. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Lujan. Our next speaker is Jesús Ramírez, and then Candido Mares will be our next speaker.
Good morning. I'm here on behalf of the South Central Farmers. South Central. Let's look at this in a world perspective. Earlier this morning, a lady said that a child could be shot in South Central. In a worldview, South Central is looked at, unfortunately, as a place that is exploited by gangs, by violence, by police brutality, so much so that there are UC sociologists, university sociologists, creating theories of why this occurs in South Central, Los Angeles, yet no one comes with a solution to the problems. Everyone creates theories why these things occur, why South Central is being exploited. And these people, these 350 families came and showed us how it's done. They didn't come with their theories, they didn't come with their PhDs, they came with their bare hands, and they are showing us how it's done to create an oasis of community, of unity, in a cancerous society that we call South Central. I don't want to go back to the 80s like movies of colors and boys in the hood, where we can go all over the world and say, "Yes, I am from South Central," and people cringe, and say, "That is an unlivable place." But these families are showing us how to cure that cancer, and we cure it by toiling the soil, by working with our community, and there is no price on that. You cannot pay a price on that, much less $16 million, Mr. Villarosa, when you have raised over $2 million for your campaign, for your personal gains.
Thank you.
That is trump change when we're talking.
I can ask you to conclude, please.
You cannot put a price on this cure.
Thank you.
Of the community. We need you.
Candido Mares is our next speaker. Thank you for your comments, sir. Your two minutes are up, and Candido Mares is our next speaker.
Good morning, council members. I would ask, I would like to ask a favor. My nephew is being buried today. He was 31 years old. He was the same age as Alex Padilla. I was, I'm unable to go because my doctors would not allow me to fly to Denver, and the reason I'm asking you if you'd adjourn and have his name mentioned is because every summer, him and my other three nephews would come out here to do Los Angeles and help us clean up graffiti. In fact, Ms. Gruel, Ms. Cardenas, the Jeopardy building that you have in your, that you both share, they both, all of them were there to help us repair that building, and the Jeopardy sign was done by my nephews. That, that was done by them, so I would ask that you, and I apologize, my phone is going off, I might hold on to it, but I would ask that you adjourn in his memory. And I would like to thank you, Councilman Cardenas, because on Wednesday, and this council are taking actions to change the way we address, and I apologize for the phone, the way we deal with the gangs. There was another child that was with my nephews, and he ended up becoming a gang member, and he was raised here. It is a cancer what we have in the city, and the actions that you're taking now to improve the way we deal with kids. The LA Best Program is probably the finest program. It is probably one of the best ways to defeat the gangs and drugs. Our parks, our, they need to be utilized, but again, we thank you for taking a look at what's taking place with our gang programs, reviewing them, and hopefully we can come up with a better answer. So thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mares. Our next speaker is Zahid Butt. Yes. Zahid Butt? Oh, it was filled out as a regular public comment card. I'll move that to number 19. That's okay. Thank you. That closes our public comment for today. Thank you all to both folks in Van Nuys, as well as the ones here in City Hall, for testifying today, and we will now go to the regular agenda. And colleagues, everything will go forth with today, since we will be in recess on Tuesday and Wednesday of next week. Tuesday and Wednesday of next week, and just remind members of the public who are here or watching, we will be in recess next week on both the 15th and the 14th due to our lobbying trip where the City Council is going to Washington, DC again to lobby on behalf of priorities for the city of Los Angeles. And our next meeting will be 9:00 AM on the 17th Friday of March, which will be next week. First order of business.
On the regular agenda, items for which public hearings have been held, items 1 through 6. On item number 5, there are multiple reports.
Okay. Colleagues, 1 through 6, any specials? Number 5? Call special? Any other specials, 1 to 6, colleagues? Seeing none, if we can please, oh, sorry, Mr. Padilla?
2.
Item 2, Mr. Padilla?
And 3.
2 and 3.
And I believe, Mr. Smith, did we want to talk about items 5?
Yeah, we have 5 special?
And 6.
Okay. 2, 3, and 6 by Mr. Padilla, and we have 5 special. Mr. Smith, the balance of the items, if we can please prepare the roll and tabulate the vote.
11 ayes.
Those are approved, and we'll go forth with next items.
Next items on the regular agenda are items for which public hearings have not been held, items 7 through 18. 10 votes are required for consideration.
Okay. Colleagues, we have 7 through 18 before us. Specials? Mr. Smith? Number 7. Other specials? 7 through 18, or 8 through 18 now? Any other specials, colleagues? We will open and close public hearing on those items, and on the balance, let's prepare the roll and tabulate the vote.
11 ayes.
Those are approved. Next items?
Our next item is on the continued agenda, item number 19. Public hearing has been held.
Ms. Hahn?
But before I talk about item 19, I want to take this opportunity to, it's Bring Your Mother to Work Day, and I want to introduce my mother, Mrs. Hahn, sitting on the front. She watches Channel 35 all the time, but she's never seen me in person.
We welcome you to City Council, Mrs. Hahn.
Yes, you can, yes. Colleagues, on item 19, if there is no objection, there have been some issues that have been raised in this past week, which I was unaware of, involving this contract with ATS. And if there is no objection, I would like to continue this item for one week while I personally meet with these people, all stakeholders, hear these issues, and try to resolve it before we approve this contract. So if no objection, I'd like to continue this for a week.
Is there any objection to that?
No, I agree with my colleague, and I look forward to meeting with them as well. The airport issues with the taxi cab is very important to me as well.
Okay, great. If there's no objection, we will continue that one week till the 17th, okay? Next items?
Next item, Mr. President, also on the continuation agenda is item number 20. Public hearing has not been held. 10 votes are required for consideration. And on this item, the City Attorney has advised that the public hearing, because it's been noticed, to be held after the clock.
Yes, we call that special. And we have cards on that as well. Okay. Next items?
Going back to the items called special, item number 2 was called special by Councilmember Padilla.
Okay. Mr. Padilla, item number 2.
Thank you, Mr. President. And colleagues, I want to call your attention to item 2A that's been circulated and should be on your desks in front of you. One of the big issues pending in the Education Neighborhoods Committee when I was appointed Chair, something that Councilmembers Hahn and Rosendahl both began to work in, is this issue of what's formerly known as the 912 Commission. When the new charter was adopted by the voters in 1999, it called for the creation of a Department of Neighborhood Empowerment. It took us a couple of years to establish the department, establish the commission. By 2001, we were certifying neighborhood councils. The charter required that five years after the, or excuse me, about seven years after, that we establish a commission to review how the neighborhood council process, and I prefer the terms, how the neighborhood council movement is working in the city of Los Angeles. We have a timeframe set for this summer to establish that, so we're not proposing today for final approval, the commission, its composition, its makeup, its size, or any of that, but as a guide that I think is going to be very helpful for stakeholders, but particularly for us council members, a timeframe and a milestone blueprint or roadmap, if you will, for making these kinds of decisions. So item 2A that's in front of you has a schedule of committee meetings that we have agreed to, including February 28th, March 24th, March 28th, April 5th, before a final meeting on April 11th. That will bring forward a comprehensive recommendation to this full council for consideration. It's done on a timely basis for the full council to act, to establish the commission. Whoever appointing authorities are to be determined at that point have ample time to make those appointments for this commission to be up and running by the charter mandated deadline. I call this to your attention because I want your input. I call this to your attention because I would rather hear from you earlier rather than later. I'm going to save a copy of the meeting's tape today and replay it later so that if folks say we didn't have enough time to weigh in, or you didn't ask for my input, or I didn't get a chance to comment, we're going to play back this tape and say, sorry, we made it very clear, very transparent to the world what our schedule was, what our process was, and we're asking you all to chime in on the size of the commission, the scope of review of the commission, who should be making appointees, appointments, the role of neighborhood council leaders, et cetera. And so look at this as a roadmap to making those final decisions. So as I said, I welcome your input and your comments in committee, either from you directly or from your staff, and to a commission up and running before we know it. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chair. And Ms. Hahn and Mr. Rosendahl and Ms. Gruel are our next speakers in that order. Ms. Hahn.
Oh, Ms. Hahn, did you say Ms.? Oh. Sorry. That bagged. Thank you, Mr. President. Colleagues, this is exactly what Councilman Padilla talked about. It's in the city charter, and it's under Section 912, and that's why we're right now formally calling it the 912 Commission. But we had the foresight in the Charter Reform Commission to put in the city charter that no less than seven years, we would take an opportunity to relook at the whole system of neighborhood councils. This was the first time the city of LA ever even dreamed that we would be able to have, you know, close to 90 neighborhood councils all over the city weighing in on the process of government. But we knew, since it was new, it had never been tried before, that we wanted to build into the city charter that we need to review it no less than seven years ago. And what I love about what we're doing today is that we're approving, you know, this money for staffing expenses for this commission. I was on the Elected Charter Reform Commission in 1997, and I don't know if you remember, but the city council at that time was very skeptical of a charter reform commission, very nervous about what we might come up with and the changes that we might propose. So they did not appropriate any money for the staffing of our charter reform commission. So the first couple of months were rough going, trying to find meeting places, trying to find people who would staff that commission, and ultimately, they saw the light and were able to fund that commission. And that's what's important. And the appointees to this commission are going to be important, but the input from neighborhood councils is going to be extremely important, which is why I like it that this says it directs Dunn to solicit feedback from the neighborhood councils. We need to hear from those who were out in the trenches during this time when neighborhood councils were being birthed and were learning to walk. We need to hear from those people. How was it, how's it working? Has it really improved the ability of people to weigh in on what we do down here? Has it really improved that early warning system where people in neighborhoods hear about ordinances, about projects, about developments long before they're done, so they have a time to really weigh in and change the outcome of a lot of things that impact their neighborhoods? This is a great process, and I'm glad we're doing this today. I think it's important, but it is important that the right people are on that commission, that we have a broad variety of people who really can have learned from some experience how neighborhood councils work. So I look forward to this process. I think it'll be very interesting for us to hear how it works, and it'll be interesting to see whether or not this commission recommends yet more changes to our city charter to make it work even better. So I'm looking forward to this process, and I'm glad we're approving this, all three of these things today. Thank you, colleagues.
Thank you very much, Ms. Hahn. Mr. Rosendahl.
I rise and agree with my colleagues that have spoken so far, and Janice Hahn's passion for neighborhood councils is really contagious, and I'm so thrilled you brought your mother here today. She and I had a little sidebar conversation about potholes and water spills, and I'm trying to emulate her late husband. And I must tell you, Public Works came through when I called them about a big puddle in my district. They were there and they did it. So I'm trying to be as best as I can, Mrs. Hahn. It's a pleasure to see you. As for this issue here, ladies and gentlemen, the last day I was Chair of the committee that oversees neighborhood councils, we approved a motion made by my colleague, Vice Chair Janice Hahn, that council files could be established through the process of neighborhood councils. I know many of us around the horseshoe question that. Maybe it'll end up as part of the discussion in the 912 Commission, but I want you to know there were some of us who felt strongly that neighborhood councils should be able to participate more vigorously in the process. I hope that the message gets out to all neighborhood councils about this schedule. I think it should be called the 912 Commission, make it as simple and as easy as we can so we can refer back to it. And I frankly think the organization of it should allow an opportunity for all neighborhood councils to participate, even if it's in an advisory subcommittee of the group, so we can get their input. I have eight neighborhood councils in the 11th District. They're all aware of the schedule and this timetable, and I urge my colleagues to generate the awareness of all of the neighborhood councils throughout this great city. This is the beginning of really making the democracy work. Grassroots democracy at its best can be our motto as we look at these neighborhood councils and the reform of them. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Rosendahl. Ms. Gruel is our next speaker.
Thank you, Mr. President. And I too want to rise and support this today because it is very important whether we have a program that we think that works or doesn't work to reevaluate and to reassess and to look back. The only way I think that we can make changes is to be able to have that public input. And we all know of examples of things that have worked in the neighborhood council system and those that have, you know, posed some challenges to our communities and even the city and how that relationship works. So I think that this is our opportunity to strengthen, to recommit in some ways, Ms. Hahn, because as you say, the last council didn't necessarily want this. And so I think we can make a strong stand as we evaluate to demonstrate that this council values our neighborhood councils, values their input, and to have that reassessment, and look forward to the discussion, as Mr. Padilla mentioned, as to how that process is going to work. But this is the first step in doing that, and we all should think long and hard about how our, who our appointments are going to be, what kind of things we want to see come out of this as well. But this is the first step, and support that efforts and appreciate your leadership, Mr. Padilla, now as Chair of this committee, in moving this forward and expediting that process and not having it lag. I think that's very, very important. So I stand in support of this and look forward to working on the next steps. What you said is in April, we'll come back by April, I think your letter said. Okay. Thank you very much, Mr. President.
Thank you very much. Mr. Padilla?
So just thank you for the supportive comments that have been made. Again, I think that the big purpose, in addition to putting council members on notice, is to give the public a clear understanding of when and how this is moving. One of the concerns that I received, the first couple of committee meetings that I chaired, was this fear from neighborhood council stakeholders that decisions were going to be made without the opportunity for input, and they didn't know if it was the first time that the item had been agendized, or the second time there was agendized, and final decisions were going to be made. And so this document is now for your comfort level that no final, final decision is going to be made until the timeframe designated on this schedule. So it's for public benefit as well as council members' benefit to serve as a guide. At the end of the day, who gets to make appointments? We don't know, so don't believe that that's been a decision that's preordained in any way. There's different proposals out there. If you go to the Dunn website today, there's a couple of proposals for discussion papers only. Not that we're nearing any consensus on any of this at all, whether it's every council member gets an appointment, the council as a body gets a few appointments, how many appointments for the mayor, is there a set aside or not for neighborhood council representatives? We don't know. We're asking for your input before making final decisions. So thank you, colleagues, for your attention to this item.
Thank you very much, Mr. Padilla. And we're all looking forward to this commission very much. So with that, I think there are no other council speakers. Let's open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
12 ayes.
That is approved, and like all items, we'll go forth with today. Next, why don't we skip 5 and 7, 4, 5, and go into 6, and then we'll come back and take 5 and 7 together.
Mr. President, item number 3 was also called special.
Item number, oh, I'm sorry, number 3. I'd already crossed it out. Mr. Padilla, number 3.
And this will be brief, colleagues. This is a motion seconded by Councilmember Reyes, Chair of the Planning and Land Use Management Committee, just asking our new Planning Director, Ms. Goldbruck, to come to either the Education Neighborhoods Committee, or very likely, a joint committee of Education Neighborhoods and Plum, to begin to discuss her ideas and her commitment on working with neighborhood councils with the planning process. I think each one of you has had experiences in your council district with your neighborhood councils, their wanting to and needing to weigh in on planning issues. We're seeking not only to get the ideas and philosophy of our new Planning Director, but move towards a formalization of that relationship, a structure to that process and some specific mechanisms. So we'll have at least one committee consideration of her presentation, and I just wanted to put that on your radar. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Padilla. If we can prepare the roll and tabulate the vote.
12 ayes.
That item is approved. Now let's go to number 6.
And that was called special by Councilmember Padilla.
Mr. Padilla, number 6.
Number 6. And actually, let me defer to Councilmember Smith on this item and Councilmember Carton on item 6, because I believe beginning in April, our commutes are significantly reduced at least once a month.
This is the item we had in Rules and Elections Committee, colleagues, and it was a motion to meet in Van Nuys City Hall, which we will be starting at regular hours next month, so just to let everybody know what that is. Whose time is, why don't we use the rest of Mr.?
I would love to speak first, but I wouldn't want to steal this thunder because this was initiated by Greg Smith. I'm fortunate enough to have the facilities in my district, so we're more than happy to host this in Van Nuys, in our City Hall chambers, quasi-replica of what we have here. It's the perfect place for us to get together. It is centralized in the San Fernando Valley. I think it's about time we've done this. I'm glad we've been able to work through this to this point, but I honestly don't want to steal any credit for it because this was initiated by Greg Smith. It was something that has been long, long overdue. I just happen to be the beneficiary geographically of having the facilities ready and able to host these meetings. So with that, I certainly welcome it, but I'd love to hear from Mr. Smith so he could remind all of us how, why he decided to push this and bring it to our attention, and I'm glad we're here. Mr.?
Thank you, Ms. Carton. First of all, I think it's very clear that this city being 465 square miles, one of the largest entities in America, and that disparate parts of the city feel very neglected and forgotten because they're so far from this building. And so the ability to move council meetings out has been a goal of this council for the last few years, as we take our roadshows, we call it, to various districts of the city. But we invested a lot of money to rebuild Van Nuys City Hall and to include in that building a council chamber so the city could recognize once that we had an actual city hall in the San Fernando Valley, that it was once the focal point of the culture of the San Fernando Valley, and that as part of the city of Los Angeles, we want to encourage that culture, support it, and give it a role and a voice in city governance. And so this motion was brought forward for that purpose, but I also want to say, it's also time now, Ms. Hahn, that we go forward with a proposal now, and I want to work with you on that, and doing the same thing at the other end of the city, which has 30-mile drive to the City Hall, and that's in San Pedro. And we will work on that. And I think, I think as we start to stay to the people of this city, we recognize this is a very big city, and every voice has to be heard, and sometimes geography makes it very impossible to do. And so this motion allows us to take our meetings once a month out to Van Nuys, and hopefully, once a month out to San Pedro, and then maybe in the future, Mr. Rosendahl out to the West Side as well. So we really recognize every geographic area of this city and include them in the process of governance. So I thank the committee for moving this forward. I think it's a strong step in the right direction, and I think we have a few more to take. And I look forward to working with Ms. Hahn and maybe Mr. Rosendahl and others on accomplishing that. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Ms. Gruel is our next speaker. Thank you very much. Ms. Gruel is our next speaker.
Thank you. And thank you, Mr. Smith, for this idea. This is one of many, but particularly the second, of trying to involve the San Fernando Valley, where we saw here this morning the ability for people to testify in the valley, which has been a great addition for many of our residents. And I think we have a lot of work to do to get more people to go out there and for them to know about it, but it has been an excellent example of bringing city council out to the people. And this is another new step to do that. Yes, for those of us that live in the valley, it’s a great, it’s an easier commute for us in that area. But most importantly, it is our chance to go across the city of Los Angeles, particularly the valley, which has, I think, 1.4 million people in it, and be able to demonstrate our commitment to addressing issues and having them have access. So I look forward to this. We had it in Budget and Finance. It is something that we have seen universally accepted by all of the council members. So congratulations, Greg. Most importantly, congratulations to the people of the San Fernando Valley who are going to have access now with us there once a month. So thank you very much, Mr. President.
Thank you, Ms. Gruel. Ms. Hahn?
Thank you, Mr. President, and I think this is a good step forward. And, you know, it was at my urging that this council actually passed the ordinance that we meet 15 times every two years outside of City Hall. And for a while, we were doing very well. I think that made a big difference for people. But, and I appreciate you, you know, speaking about the Harbor area, because I don’t have to remind you that the Harbor area also was so unhappy that they wanted to secede from this city. And the Harbor area felt so disconnected from downtown Los Angeles. And right now, we don’t have the videoconferencing set up, which I think we should. And I appreciate you wanting to work with us, but I need more than words today. I need more than, “We want to work with you, Ms. Hahn, to bring these meetings to the Harbor area.” I would like to offer a friendly amendment today that we, in fact, meet three times a year in the Harbor area.
Second.
Thank you. Because I think that would be a very important step, because again, that is another area that feels completely disconnected. It’s too far down here to City Hall. We don’t have the videoconferencing, and the majority of the time, the people will not make the trip down to City Hall to weigh in on issues. So I think I’d like to make that as a friendly amendment to this. I think it’s important that we continue to have the policy that we take government to the people and not expect the people to always come to us. As you saw, we just had an issue with taxi cab drivers, and one of the issues was, “Well, where were you at the Airport Commission? Where were you at the committee that I chaired?” Well, you know what? That’s okay, the fact. But we need to make sure that we take government to people, and we do everything we can to hear the issues, to address the issues, and come up with solutions for the people that make up this great, great city. So I applaud the valley council members for seeing this, but I want you to commit today to also meet three times a year in the Harbor area. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Ms. Hahn. Our next speaker is Mr. Rosendahl, to be followed by Mr. Labange and Mr. Cardenas again.
You know, what’s interesting about this is ITA has the ability to plug in city staff here at City Hall in downtown into a conference center concept with us holding council meetings out in the field. So it will be very efficient to do it. Yes, we need to decentralize our government and get closer to the people. We need to do it for a lot of reasons. One of them, of course, is gridlock. Of course, I’d love to hold meetings on the West Side. I spend more than an hour a day in gridlock, and I’m outraged by it, and so is everybody else in the 11th District. So wouldn’t it be nice to hold council meetings occasionally in the West Side somewhere, as it is important to do in the valley, as it is important to do in the Harbor? But I think we can be efficient and effective also by going into the districts. One of the reasons secession gained momentum was people felt government was not listening to them and were not letting them participate in it. When we did our inaugural one in the valley there, I was thrilled to see such a community outpouring to be there. And if we do them at regular time, 10:00 in the morning, maybe some of my colleagues will experience what I experienced all the day when you come into the West Side. It’s all gridlock, everybody. And maybe as we all appreciate the gridlock, we’ll be able to provide the kinds of supports from the federal government. That’s why we’re going back, you know, to the League of Cities, is to see that the federal government gives the city of LA more support and resources. And mass transit is one of those issues. I wholeheartedly support my colleagues to have the valley as a place once a month, 10 o’clock in the morning, bright-eyed and bushy-tailed, will be there. Thank you.
Mr. Labange is our next speaker.
At the city clerk, Mr. Martinez, you want to sit at the table, just for a quick question there on this. This is very exciting. I thank Mr. Smith for that. But what does it take? Because I do support the effort by Ms. Hahn to go to San Pedro, and if there’s a municipal building, although the municipal building in West LA doesn’t have a facility to hold a meeting, I think you could probably do it at the Harbor Department building. Could you look at that at other locations, too?
Well, certainly, we can look at all of that. And just as a sense of context, in this report section you’re taking today, $150,000 is being provided to ITA from within their TDA account in order to do the robotic cameras needed to be able to manage that meeting out in Van Nuys from their central control facility. So that’s part of the cost. And then, of course, the staff issues of making sure we got people in both here as well as the Van Nuys facility.
And years ago, before, we were successful in the charter change to have regional planning commissions, along with the big city planning commission. They used to meet every other week or so in the valley or in the city at the women’s club, I think, right on Irwin Avenue, I think it was. But the question I want to ask, in developing the calendar, could issues that, let’s say on a Wednesday, there is a “valley” issue, could it be held to a Friday to make, when we meet out there?
We can certainly work with the president’s office as well as the individual members on scheduling. But remember, too, there are some things that are noticed for a specific date for public hearings, so we have to abide by that as well.
But look at that. Thank you very much, and thank your excellent staff of the city clerks, who will be a big help in this. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Labange. Mr. Cardenas?
Mr. Cardenas? Sorry. Thank you very much. I was saying hello to Mrs. Hahn. I think it’s important that I remind everybody that this is just another step in the access that people have in our democracy in this city. As you may have noticed, in these chambers, once in a while, we will cut away to Van Nuys, where people can be in the San Fernando Valley, go to a local place, and then actually appear on the screen, and we can hear and see that individual, and they can see us. So this process of access is growing and ongoing. And one thing I’d like to say as well, I’m not saying that we’re perfect, and I’m not saying we have 100% access, and I don’t know if that is achievable, but what we’re doing here is trying to make it as accessible as humanly possible, using technology, changing geographics, using all those kinds of things to make sure that more and more people have access. We also have translation every single time here in a second language, the second most spoken language here in the city of Los Angeles. So access is something that we’re working on. It’s not just rhetoric with the city council. It is reality, and this is just another step to show that we are making concrete commitments and making those commitments into action. Once again, I’d like to thank Councilmember Smith and also Ms. Hahn for working on this for so many years, and Mr. Smith being a representative of the valley, making sure that the valley gets its proper due attention and opportunity. And this is an opportunity that I’m sure the people of the valley are going to take advantage of. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Cardenas. We’re pleased to pass this unanimously in committee, and also, just as a point of information, we are working on with ITA the ability to be able to testify remotely from City Hall on those days that we will be in Van Nuys, so folks, such as those that are here today, would be able to testify and be heard, seen on Channel 35, but heard by us as well through that remote facility capability. So with that, if we can please prepare the roll and tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes.
That is approved. Sorry, the city attorney did make one mention about Ms. Hahn’s motion. Ms. Hahn? There was a, the motion that you made, the city attorney has asked if we could bring in separately, since it wasn’t agendized as such. Is that, okay, Mr.?
Point of information.
Actually, it’s more of a clerical matter. It’s easier for the clerk’s office to open up another file on that. Okay, we’ll work with Ms. Hahn on that. Okay, next items, please.
Next item, Mr. President, I believe you’re holding items five and seven on the desk. Do you wish to go to item number 20?
If it’s all right with Mr. Smith, we’ll go to item 20 first. And before that, actually, can we recess this and take up the special meeting agenda? Please call the roll on special meeting.
Cardenas, Gruel, Hahn, Weisar, Labange, Padilla, Parks, Perry, Reyes, Rosendahl, Smith, Vice, Wesson, Zine, Garcetti, 11 members present in the court, Mr. President.
Okay, first items, please.
First items are items for which public hearings have been held, and they’re Budget and Finance Committees reports.
Okay. Anybody wishing to call either those special? If not, please prepare the roll and tabulate the vote.
Eleven ayes.
Those are approved. Next item? Everything we’ll go forth with from the special meeting as well?
Next items are, excuse me, next item is an item for which public hearing has not been held. 10 votes are required for consideration, and it is a track map.
Okay. Item number three, we will open and close the public hearing. Anybody wishing to call that special? Seeing nobody, do you want to call it special, Mr. Weisar?
I’d like to ask, send to forthwith, please.
Everything will be forthwith today.
Thank you.
100%. Number three is before us. Please prepare the roll and tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes.
That is approved as well. We can go back to the regular meeting now and take up item number 20, please.
And there is an amending motion that has been distributed to the council members on this item.
Okay. I’d like to open a public comment, a 10-minute public hearing for this. I’d like to start with J. Miguel Flores, and that will be followed by Ms. Hawkins, and then we will turn to cards that we have on the four side. Welcome, Mr. Flores. Hold on one second before you start. The city attorney just needs to make a comment. Please, Mr. City Attorney.
Thank you, Mr. President. And just a reminder to the council members, item number 20 is a fair hearing matter requiring the council’s attention.
Mr. Rosendahl, Mr. Labange, Ms. Hahn, the city attorney has informed us this is a public hearing matter in which we need to pay special close attention to. So I would just remind that, Mr. Padilla and Ms. Perry as well. Thank you. We’ll, hold on one second, Mr. Flores, and we’ll make sure everybody’s in their seats in our quasi-judicial capacity here. Okay, please go ahead.
Thank you, honor roll council members. J. Miguel Flores, attorney for the Silverstein Law Firm, representing La Marada Neighborhood Association of Hollywood. La Marada is the appellant in this matter, which seeks to reverse the grant of the variance that would nearly double the density and increase the height allowed for the project on Herald Way in Hollywood. For the record, this law firm has admitted further written objections to the granted of this variance, and for the record, the council has not had an opportunity to review the amended motion on the floor today. On February 24, 2006, we appeared before the Central Area Planning Commission. The Central Area Planning Commission granted our appeal and reversed the decision of the zoning administrator. The Planning Commission deliberated and considered extensive testimony and voted not once, but twice, to reverse the zoning administrator’s approval of the variance in this case. The first vote was two to two. The second was three to one vote, reversing the grant of the variance as having been improperly granted in violation of the law. On February 21, 2006, Councilmember Garcetti stripped the Planning Commission of its jurisdiction. The reason why we are here today...
Just as a point of information, sir, the entire council votes on that one.
It is essential for the council to deny the variance application, because the variance is not supported by the strict findings which must be present, specifically, the strict application of the provision of the zoning ordinance would not result in practical difficulties or unnecessary hardships inconsistent with the general purposes and intent of zoning regulations. The Q conditions exist in part to limit density traffic parking problems. By ignoring the Q condition and granting the variance, you impose upon the community the ill effects of the Q condition was designed to reduce or avoid. It is not proper to claim that the Hollywood Community Plan update at some unknown time in the future, possibly years out, may remove the Q condition. The law is clear now.
Thank you very much, Mr. Flores. We appreciate your testimony. Ms. Sylvia Hawkins, also in opposition?
Good morning, everyone. My name is Sylvia Hawkins. As your president, on number 20, we must say no on zoning and closing our streets and having apartments or houses gated in, because of the danger zone of hiding prime ministers, presidents, and their cabinet of other governments’ countries during the time of war in their country, because of the high alert that is dealing with kidnapping, anti-tourists, and hiding illegal immigrants in the time of war, in the time of, if the street is blocked off, the danger zone, if the police do not know what is behind the gates, what is behind the zoning, and the danger zone of people not knowing who is hitting, what is dealing with houses, apartments, or schools. Thank you very much. My name is Sylvia Hawkins.
Thank you, Ms. Hawkins. We appreciate that. Now we’ll turn to cards on the four side. Murray Fisher, to be followed by Dan Mahoney, and there are a number of other cards as well. Welcome.
Good morning, President Garcetti and distinguished members of the Los Angeles City Council. My name is Murray Fisher. I’m an attorney-at-law representing the owners of the property at 5420 Herald Way, and we request that you uphold the zoning administrator’s grant for the variance, and also the Plum Commission’s decision to uphold the grant for the variance. In order to try to help you reach this decision, again, the Q condition for this property was enacted in 1990. The SNAP, which is a specific plan, was enacted in 2001 and recommended changes to the height and density in this area to take advantage of the transit system, which is not in operation in 1990. The Hollywood Community Plan update is currently in process right now and has recommended a greater density for this area. The Metro Line was instituted in the late 1990s and now is an integral part of this particular area. The mayor of the city of Los Angeles and many members, distinguished members of the council here, have asked for increased housing and density in areas, especially transit-oriented areas. And the state of California has mandated through its housing plan that increased density be allowed in areas. The zoning administrator, Gary Buer, has in fact found for the findings in the variance and has stated that these are legal findings and they are allowable under this condition. Not only is this a transit area with special needs, but as you will see from the boards that we have presented here today, that this is only a special pocket. It’s near a transit area. There are other areas within this zone that have already been granted higher densities, some on our own block. Two on our own block have greater than 20 units in those particular areas. Also, this is an all-inclusive area, because surrounding this property are C2 areas. C2 will allow higher density of R4 in that particular area. A variance was also granted already for another property in this area in 1992 from the Q condition, and that was at 5423, one block north from where our property was. And that particular property was granted a density for additional units. As I stated earlier, the Hollywood Community Plan, and we have presented to you in the packet, I’ve been asked to say that I’ve had additional time from different people who give up their time.
Let me call on those folks just to confirm that. Randall Thompson, do you give that time up? Do you yield that time? Okay, why don’t you continue with his two minutes, and we’ll take it from there.
The Hollywood Community Plan is studying this particular area. As their recommendation is stated, and we have supplied to Plum at that particular time, Mary Richardson, who is head of that particular committee, had indicated the removal of the Q condition, which imposes a hardship on this property by that density. The housing element of the city of the general plan has indicated that it’s to be updated every five years. However, this particular area has not been updated since 1990, creating another further hardship. There doesn’t have to be a physical difference in the property. What you will note from our map is that in this area, this area is located near the red line. Number two, it’s on a dead-end street. Most of the streets in this particular area are full streets. Our opponents would like you to think that by putting in 18 units on this particular property, that we’re surcharging parking and circulation in the street. This is not correct. In fact, the previous units that were there, six units, provided zero legal parking at this particular property. We are now providing 29 parking spaces on this property. They are all designated onsite parking spaces. We only need to have 24, but we’re providing greater than what is needed. Therefore, the people that will be using this particular street will not have to drive up and down the street to look for parking. Instead, they will have designated parking within this building. We are eliminating any congestion on the street. We are eliminating circulation problems on this street. In fact, we are increasing the lifestyle and the quality of life in this particular area. We are proactive. We have, we're proactive, we have reached out to Council District 13, we have worked with the people, we have gotten the support from Jim McQuiston on this particular, from SNAP. He's indicated the fact that this project is compliant with SNAP. The major opponents in this particular property are La Marada, which live over five blocks away from where this is. It's separated by Sunset Boulevard, it's not close to the Hollywood area, it's not close to, when I say Hollywood, Hollywood and Western area. And we have reached out not only to Mr. McQuiston, we've reached out to the Chamber of Commerce, we have their support, we have the support of the neighbors on the block, we have five, if I can have an additional...
Thank you. Jason Lob here? Do you yield your time? Okay, two more minutes, please.
In addition to that, we've also been commended by the Hollywood Police Area, in fact, because we have cleaned this lot up already, we have made this lot, we have eliminated crime within that particular area. Everything we have done, we have reached out to work with everybody in this area. The findings that you have in front of you are sufficient findings. I would also like to introduce numerous other documents, including a statewide transit-oriented development executive summary indicating the importance of providing increased density and housing within transit areas. It is very important in this particular area. I'd also like to say that my clients are willing to offer, in this particular property, subsidized housing financing under the CAL HFA, which is a very important factor. That is a special financing that will allow first-time homebuyers the opportunity to buy these properties at reasonable prices, and it is a program that we have used in other districts, and they have found it to be extremely beneficial. And if you have any questions, I'll be more happy to answer any questions that you might have. We ask you to uphold the zoning variance on this and to uphold the decision of the Plum, and thank you very much for your time.
Thank you very much, Mr. Fisher. We have a number of other speakers here. We, I think with ten minutes, you're not going to be able to get to all the folks that are on the, the four side. Why don't we have all the folks that are here on the four side please to stand so we can see, I'll read all the names into the record as well, and we will be able to get to a couple more. Thank you very much, we appreciate that. Let me return, there's a card that's been submitted from the against side, Dorin Rohan, if you'd like to come forward, and then we'll return to somebody from the four side, I mean, yeah, the four side, and then we will close public comment. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Dorin Rohan. I'm a property owner next, on the east side of this project. The reason I'm opposing this project is that there is no parking in this area, only seven parking spaces there on east, on north side of the street, and six parking spaces on the south side of the street. It's very difficult to find parking. Tenants in this area, they are complaining all the time about parking. By having a condominium on this street, it's going to impact our neighborhood very much. This is not an affordable housing. These people are wanting to, you know, sell condos on our street. That's not the right thing to do. I think we have to think about our people who lives in the neighborhood, which is very difficult for them to park. They come at night, late at night, and they are complaining that they have to park like two, three blocks away from this place. On the other hand, the subway that was built on Western and Hollywood Boulevard, it's way far away to walk at night. I would suggest anyone to try and get that chance of walking at night from the subway. They are three blocks away from there. Not only that, there is a new construction close by, which is a two-story building, it's a ten units, and it's affordable for those people to build that type of building. I don't think that's an issue of not being feasible if they will build only eleven units rather than eighteen. So I will strongly suggest that you look into this. Most of the buildings, they don't have parking spaces there, they are old buildings, and we have, like, I own two buildings on that street, they are eight units each, two bedrooms, and they have only six parking each. Now, on the other hand, the gentleman who just talked here, he said, "There are no parkings before on this property." He lies. I mean, I'm having this building since 1995. There are six parking spaces on this property, they are like since Bangalos, and they are like, they had six parking spaces. Thank you.
Thank you very much. We have a number of cards that say donate time to Murray Fisher, so I'm going to skip those ones and go to next, is it Greg Worrell, Mr., someone, Mr. Worrell, and then Charles O'Neill, and then we'll, I think, take one more speaker. There's a Rochelle Sillsby.
Council members, I've been in the real estate and property management business for the last fifteen years. Over that time period, I've worked with numerous Hollywood residents, most with a desire to own a home in the area. This desire to fulfill the American dream was the brainchild of the Worrell moderately-priced workforce housing near mass transit. What good is a state-of-the-art mass transit system if the city is not going to allow the type of density that will make its operation viable? The opposition petition that was crafted by the owner of the adjacent property, Dorin Rohan, is without merit. As an investor in the proposed project, I met with Mr. Rohan on several occasions to discuss the possibility of purchasing his property. He was very eager to sell the property, however, he insisted the property was worth well over its going-market rate in the area. He mentioned that he thought the site would be a good site for a new development. We later decided not to purchase the property, given our economic assessment. Thus, there is little doubt that Mr. Rohan has his own agenda. When reviewing the petition that Mr. Rohan submitted to the council, most of the signatures are of his own tenants. This discredits his entire petition as he is falsely representing the community. The developer, on the other hand, walked throughout the entire neighborhood on three separate occasions, explaining the project in great detail. The result was forty-nine separate households, real neighbors signing the petition, supporting the proposed project at 5420 Herald Way. Similarly, there is no record anywhere of the La Marada Neighborhood Association. They are not a certified neighborhood council. As such, I am baffled by their motivation to limit density on a street several blocks away from La Marada, with a major thoroughfare like Sunset Boulevard running between the two. It's a shame that this so-called neighborhood group does not represent the real community. Having worked in and around Hollywood...
If I can ask you to conclude? Thank you. We have Charles O'Neill.
Good morning, honorable city council members. Charles O'Neill, speaking on behalf of John Gunson, owner of property at 1537 through 1541 North Serrano. A letter addressed to Gary Buer of the zoning administration presented here in front of the honorable city council members. Dear Gary, I'm writing this letter in support of the proposed The Worrell Condominium Project. My wife, Monique Lavoy, and I own property located at 1537 through 1541 Serrano Avenue, located just behind Herald Way. A new five-story condominium development at 5220 Herald Way will not only enhance the aesthetics of the neighborhood, but also improve the quality of its residents. Homeowners, as opposed to renters, tend to show a more vested interest in the community. After meeting with Jason Tolson, I am impressed by the efforts of the developer that the developer has made to educate neighbors about the project. I believe in his strategy of high-density residential development easily accessible to mass transit. The Metro Red, the Metro Rail red line is two blocks from the site, located at Western and Hollywood Boulevard. Finally, I believe that this project is positive for the community as a whole. The planned development is a dramatic improvement to the existing apartment building, and I expect that this will be a catalyst for further development in the area and improve the streetscape of the block. Sincerely, John Gunson.
Thank you very much. Rochelle Sillsby.
My name is Rochelle Sillsby. I'm the vice president of public policy for the Hollywood Chamber of Commerce. I'm here today on behalf of the Hollywood Chamber of Commerce relative to the proposed condominium project by Serrano Development Group at 5420 Herald Way. The developers have presented their project to our Economic Development Committee. Based on a review, the chamber wishes to express its support of the proposed project. We believe the project is consistent with the density and scale of the block on Herald Way for which it is proposed. It is within the area of the SNAP ordinance adopted by the City of Los Angeles, which encourages high-density transit-oriented development in the areas adjacent to the Metro Rail Station. A special interest to us is that the developer is proposing for-sale housing at this site at prices below the median sale prices for the region. We believe that for Hollywood to prosper, there must be residential opportunities for all income levels. Most of the other condominium projects proposed in Hollywood are at a higher price point. We believe this project can be a catalyst for other similar projects in this neighborhood. Based on these factors, we urge you to approve the project as proposed. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I know we had many, many cards. I'd like to read into the record, there's nineteen cards we won't be able to get to today, but I'd like to read the names into the record, all of these for the record are for the proposal. Jason Tolson, Michael Ming, Marco Yuni, Amanda Leibowitz, Eric Sussman, Freddie Monge, Jared Revai, Herbert Sussman, Elizabeth Sussman, Jennifer Pass, Henry Lambating, Joselito Orozco, Margaret Ann Murray, Charles Kaplan, Steve Orchard, Kirk Allegro, Dan Mahoney, Brett Rifford, and Felina Nugent. Excuse me if I butchered anybody's names, we wanted to make sure those are on the records. We will now turn to council comment, which will begin in just a second. Thank you very much, Madam President. Thank you all to the members of the community who are here today, and thank you, colleagues, for your attention to this matter and allowing us to go through public hearing, further public hearing on this as well. We talk a lot about traffic in the city, and we talk a lot about gridlock. I know Mr. Rosendale is passionate about that, I know Ms. Gruel is passionate about it. I shouldn't start naming names because I know there's fifteen people who are passionate about that, because we hear that each and every day. And a lot of us imagine an Expo line and a line that might get to the ocean and celebrate the new Orange Line, the extension of rail into the east side. But we've already invested a lot of money in something called the Red Line, which goes straight through the heart of Hollywood from downtown through the Wilshire Corridor. And now we're beginning to see through the community, which gave us a plan called the SNAP Plan, the Station Neighborhood Area Plan, which was initiated and passed by my predecessor, Ms. Jackie Goldberg, as a way of doing transit-oriented development. Instead of planning it around transit that may be there in the future, there's transit that is there right now. I'm very familiar with the neighborhood where this project is being proposed. It's about two blocks from my new field office, at the corner of Hollywood and Western, so I spend much of my week there as well. And this neighborhood has changed dramatically over the last ten years. I think folks who are familiar with Hollywood and Western about ten years ago would have said it was one of the worst intersections anywhere in Los Angeles, overrun by drug dealing, prostitution, gang activity. I was told in meeting in my office yesterday that somebody who hadn't been there in many years said, "I remember the last time I was here, people were shooting from your building at the building right across the street." It now is something quite different. You see a Ralph's supermarket, a Red Line station stop there, reinvestment and revitalization. The Hollywood CRA, working together with affordable housing developers, market rate developers, have developed a number of innovative projects, from the Views at 270 project above a Walgreens, which shows that mixed-use can work, to a number of beautiful affordable housing projects that have really brought the neighborhood up. This is a neighborhood that is served by a Metro Red Line station stop, two rapid transit lines, two of them with MTA, and several regular bus routes. It's what we want to see our city look like. And the CRA is currently working to bring LA's first full-service bike station and a car-sharing service to that Metro Red Line station. It is that transit hub we all would like to see to finally relieve that traffic that we have here in Los Angeles. I know it's counterintuitive, and when I hear from members when I walk door-to-door, because I walk this neighborhood myself quite a bit, that people say sometimes, "I don't want something new built in my area because I can't find a place to park now." And then when we describe exactly as the developer did, well, when there's a new project that comes online, people are still cramming into the existing housing that exists. You open a door and you see ten people sometimes living in a one- or two-bedroom apartment. That is precisely because nothing new has been built. Their cars are on our street with no new parking spaces built. A project like this actually relieves the congestion and the traffic that we have, because it says, "We're not going to sit around and let density overtake us, we are going to plan for it and get ahead of it." This neighborhood is also a pretty unique one because it's a truly mixed-use character. When Walgreens wanted to come in and do kind of a suburban model of pushing a Walgreens to the back of two main streets and have just parking lots on Sunset and Western, we said, "Think with us, come to the street and use the free airspace to put housing," which is great for the customers of Walgreens, but at the same time is good civic planning. And I'm glad that community groups like Jim McQuiston and the East Hollywood Neighborhood Association, which helped make SNAP a reality, came out and supported this as well. Supporting projects of this type in neighborhoods like this is consistent with our long-range plans as well, to foster walkable, fully modal transit communities. And while this market has an abundance of market-rate rental housing, it does not have a large homeowner population, and this project will be the first. It is not low-income affordable housing, but it certainly isn't the high-level luxury housing that we're seeing in other parts of Hollywood. And that's very important, because we say around here quite often, "What happened to the middle class? What happened to that couple that's trying to buy their first house or condominium?" Right now, so many people are shut out of that market. This price point is something that is badly needed. And I want to thank the developers as well for working with a program to make that even more accessible to folks who are at that workforce level. We have put additional findings that are here, that are open, that are public here, and the volunteer conditions of the applicant, that they have volunteered as well, above and beyond what the zoning administrator required. I think, just to simplify this, colleagues, there was, there is something called the Station Neighborhood Area Plan. It's a specific plan, and it overrides other zoning. Folks have looked at other zoning and said, "This is what it should exist in Hollywood." And I believe that's why there's been some mistakes along the way. The zoning administrator realizes what's there, the community that worked hard to put that specific plan knows what's there, and knows that this meets exactly what we hope to see. Now that this is finally before us, I want to thank the folks who have stepped up to do this, but dispassionately, because I don't know the developers personally, and I know members in the community who I've talked to, this is what we have been waiting for, and on behalf of the community, I urge your unanimous vote today. Thank you very much.
Madam President, I rise to support my colleague on this. It's a visionary strategy, which is we should build mini-villages and mini-densities around transportation linkage and corridors. That's what it's all about, to get out of this gridlock. And where we have the trains and the subways and the bus lines, that's where we should be building up. Many of us don't want to get in a car every day. We'd much rather get out of wherever we live, go down into a subway, or get on a light rail, or get on a bus. And this density around major transportation hubs is key for us to get out of gridlock. And I applaud my colleague and the leadership he's provided, and the community on both sides of the issue, that what we're looking at is the future. And the future requires us to appreciate transportation corridors as well as commercial corridors when we build up and we build our density. Los Angeles County has been like a flat pancake, and that's why we're suffering with all this gridlock. We need to create density around transportation hubs. There's a perfect example of it, and I appreciate your leadership on this.
Thank you, Mr. Rosendale. The item is now before us. Madam Clerk, could you let us know? I know there's an amendment that was in...
Yes, there is an amendment, and it was written, and it has been distributed to the council members, and it's to adopt additional revised findings.
Okay, so we have the amendment before us, as well as the original report, correct?
Yes.
Okay. Madam Clerk, open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the votes.
Twelve ayes.
That item has been approved as amended. Thank you. Next item.
Next item, Madam President, is item number five, and that was called special by Councilmember Smith.
Before we do that, I'd like to acknowledge Mr. Padilla for an introduction.
Yes, colleagues, if I can turn your attention to the rear of chambers here, we have visiting City Hall today a group from Ivy Academy Charger School in Willand Hills. If kids want to stand up and be on TV, they're visiting from a councilmember's Zines district. And they're brought to us today by a couple of their teachers, Adriana Albron from the seventh-grade class, known as Dartmouth, Tara Harris from the seventh-grade class, Yale, and their principal is Christina Gordon. Welcome you to City Hall today.
Thank you all very much, and welcome. We hope it will not be your last visit to City Hall, and we are certainly here for you. We will now turn our attentions to items five and seven. Would you like to take those together, Mr. Smith? Okay. I'll recognize Mr. Smith on items five and seven.
Thank you, Mr. President. First of all, this was put on the agenda last week as an opportunity to update the council and hopefully have a contract, but that is not the case yet. But I think it's important for the CLA to come forward and give us an update on the current negotiating... current negotiations on the BFI contract, as it has evolved based on the council instructions to renegotiate the contract for the 600-ton reduction plan. Jerry?
Good morning. Since we're still in negotiations, I'm not in a position of talking too much about it, but we are in discussions. They have at times been rather heated, but folks are working in good faith, and we are pursuing the 600-ton option, as I indicated. And, you know, really the focus is on what the terms of that would be, what the cost of that would be, what other terms BFI would put on the table, what other terms that we want. So discussions continue to be ongoing, and we have until the 17th, as you recall, to rescind the action approving the extension.
I've given the general characterization that we're not that far apart, that the two issues on the table we're discussing, and there's some movement toward some conclusion. Would that be a fair characterization, that we are moving toward at least baby steps forward to finding a solution to this?
Well, I think both sides are working very hard to get to a solution. And, I mean, there are real proposals on the table that we are dealing with. You know, at the end of the day, when we have gone as far as we can go, I'll be back to you with outlining the proposal. So there will be something to bring back to you. I'm not going to characterize at this point whether that something is something that's in the city's interests. I think that will continue to evolve.
And if I could hold my time and come back on seven, it might be better if we ask if there's any questions on this, on number five, and then I'll come back and close on number seven.
Okay. On items number, we'll just, we'll call on you first on that one. On item number five here, colleagues, the ongoing negotiations with BFI and Allied Waste on the Sunshine Canyon, consistent with our policy to move a portion of that, or to reduce a portion either way of that landfilling. Are there any questions? Again, we're here in a snapshot today in the midst of negotiations. We had hoped to have that resolved by today. We have one more week in which to finalize that. But if there are no other questions, we will move on then to number seven. And thank Mr. Miller and the President of the Board as well, Ms. Reese, for their ongoing negotiations, which have gone forward with deliberate, all deliberate speed. Mr. Padilla on number five? Do you like to...
So just for clarification, not taking a final vote on item five, that's carrying over till next week?
Exactly. We will carry that over, and since we are not meeting on Tuesday and Wednesday, that will carry over to the 17th automatically. Okay? All right, great. So take up Mr. Smith, number seven.
Okay. On number seven, you instructed the committee to review the options that were out there on how we are going to divert the 600 tons. We had an extraordinary meeting of three committees last week, which actually constituted a special meeting in the City Council, but we voted independently the committees. So before you are three reports from the three committees, all three of them saying the same thing. We reviewed the five options prepared by our CLA, and how we would dispose of the 600 tons of trash. What is the best option, what's most economical operationally, what is the best option? And we took into account all those considerations and brought forward to you numbers A and B. I shouldn't say numbers, but letters A and B. Letter A is an option to send all of our trash, 600 tons, one-waste shed, to El Sobrante landfill. And option B is a mixed combined use, half of it going to El Sobrante, half of it going to Avonall. Both projects are within range of each other. One is about $1.5 million, the other $1.9 million. To put that in context, both of those would be in the range of about a quarter to the SEC charge, 25 cents a month to the SEC charge to cover those costs. So these are certainly cost-efficient in the way we proceed with them. Now, if I may change hats, instead of the committee chair, personally, I think that we should look at the options out there and have all our options available, particularly as we enter the final discussions with Sunshine Canyon, BFI, that we want to make a very strong statement that this council is still committed to a 600-ton reduction. It has been our policy since last August. We have reiterated that time and time again. Our negotiators have taken that to the table, and our choosing today of one of these two options says very clearly that this council is committed to removing 600 tons a day. BFI pay attention. And I think that's important, that we rule today on one of these two options. So I urge you to support one. Personally, I have no real choice of the two. I think they're both great options. I personally believe that it's in the best interest of the city that we choose B or some form of B, because I think we need to have as many options out there as possible. And choosing just one company alone still kind of ties our hands, which has been my argument all along. We've been too selective in tying our hands and not having options on the bailout bill. What would happen next week if the negotiation would be, if I totally break down? Then we will be confronted with the concerns. Do we then go ahead and forget the 600-ton commitment? Or do we go ahead and say, "Okay, we're going to take all our trash out of Sunshine Canyon, and in doing so, what will be our options?" If we close one of the doors today, then we have one option only again. And it puts us right back where I said we've been in the wrong place for decades, that we only have one option to take our trash to. I don't think that's good public policy. So personally, I believe B makes the greatest sense. I know Ms. Perry has some concerns about the environmental issues with B, and I concur with her on those issues, but I think we need to discuss this. So I'm bringing to you A and B. I personally recommend B, and I'd love to hear a discussion on that. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Mr. Padilla is next, to be followed by Mr. Kartness.
I'll be brief right now, and then press my button again, but Mr. Smith, in the conversation or the discussion about option B versus option C, I believe the committee sent forward to the council two options without recommendation. Tell me if I'm right here, but it's only a relevant discussion if we're successful in the renegotiation of the BFI contract to allow us to send trash elsewhere, other than Sunshine Canyon. So I'm happy to discuss it today. I think we should, but I don't want to spin our wheels here if the negotiations with BFI are not fruitful this week or next. I think these two should come together. If we're successful with BFI, then this is a relevant discussion, and we should hash it out at the appropriate time. Any comment, Mr. Miller?
Well, yeah, certainly this would be, well, it would be depending upon, dependent upon a couple of things. One, yes, if the negotiations with BFI are successful, and there is a deal on the table to divert 600 tons that the council will accept, then this would come into play. Also, if the negotiations with BFI are not successful, and a majority of the council votes to rescind the extension, then certainly these options and more would come into play, because obviously then we're dealing with 3,600 tons, not 600.
Thank you, Mr. Padilla. Mr. Kartness?
I'd just like to say that when we finally take a vote on whether it be option A or option B, I think it's important for us to understand that we're the council of today that is having to deal with council or city decisions of yesterday that have put us in a very bad position, because we've put all of our eggs in one basket. We have put the diversion of 600 tons a day is just a fraction of what we send to Sunshine Canyon today. And the reason why I favor option B over option A is that it will be a realistic decision of this council today's. When we make decisions today and into the future, we're going to be mindful of the fact that we not tie our hands and put all of our eggs in one basket. Option A says we take 600 tons and make a deal, work out a contract with one contractor. And option B says we'll take those same 600 tons and split it between two contractors. And that's why I favor that we split it between two contractors, because the reason why we're in this position, the reason why we have this deadline coming up next Friday, the reason why we're having to deal with the contemplation of a few hundred thousand dollars here and there to many millions of dollars more spending tomorrow after July 1st versus what we have to spend today, is because we have all of our eggs in one basket. And when you do that, you put yourself in a precarious position where they can actually hold us to some kind of standard, they can hold us to some kind of situation where we will reluctantly do business with them. And that's the situation that we have, in my opinion, with BFI. We are reluctantly continuing to have to contemplate putting all of that... How many tons is it do we send to BFI?
3,600 tons a day.
3,600 tons a day?
Right.
And they've sent a message to us, basically saying, "If you want to modify that, then it's going to cost you millions more at the end of the year, if you're going to do business with us, less than 3,600 tons a day." That, to me, is unconscionable, not toward the council, but to the people of Los Angeles. Not toward the council, but to the decisions that were made that eventually allowed them to even have that site on the border of the city of Los Angeles, traversing the city of Los Angeles and the county of Los Angeles. For them to just say, "Well, we got ours, and we're not going to be reasonable with you," to me is unconscionable, not about disrespecting the council, because when you are not willing to negotiate with the city of Los Angeles, that means that you're not willing to be fair with the people of Los Angeles. So I just wanted to put that on the record, that I hope that the spirit of working with the people of Los Angeles is something that BFI is willing to work with. But when it comes to decisions into the future, or where we're going to send our tonnage on a daily basis, I don't want us to fall into the same category, where we're sending it all to one business. I'd prefer that we diversify that.
Thank you, Mr. Weiss. Is our next speaker? Mr. Weiss?
Thank you, Mr. President.
Over there.
Could you explain for us, please, Mr. Miller, the vote that's being put before us today? We have to, the way the motion is characterized, the way the report is characterized, must we pick between window, or what's behind curtain A and curtain B?
No, well, no, it isn't. From the standpoint of moving forward, it's not essential today that you make a decision, because, again, it's contingent upon whether or not there is ultimately an agreement with BFI, or whether or not the council on the 17th votes to rescind the contract in its entirety.
So is there a vote, is there something being put before us today to vote on, or not?
Well, yes, before you are two viable options for diverting 600 tons. No matter what you do today, obviously, it would be contingent upon getting a deal with BFI.
So even though, even though the city doesn't know precisely what BFI has up its sleeve, if indeed it has anything up its sleeve, we're potentially being asked today to discard one option in favor of another? Am I getting this?
Well...
Right? That's choosing, right?
That is choosing, yeah.
Okay.
This would not, however, be the final vote on either option, because we still have to come back with the contract and all that kind of stuff.
That's one thing I've learned, and when you talk about Sunshine Canyon, there's never a final vote. All right? I get that. It's like a hereditary disease, okay? It just never goes away. Now, how much does A cost?
A is about $1.6 million.
So that's 16 cops. So option A costs 16 police officers. How much does B cost?
B is about $1.9 million.
19 police officers. So I'm being asked to choose today whether I would rather have 16 police officers pick up the trash, or whether I'd rather have 19 police officers pick up the trash? Because that's general fund money, right?
It is, it is general fund money, yes.
Okay. I would just suggest, colleagues, that whatever the status of these negotiations are, and I don't know what they are, and I'm not in the negotiating team, I am uncomfortable being asked today to decide which of these options the city ought to follow, or if indeed it ought to follow any of them. I'd like to see option C here. Is there an option C that the negotiations with BFI results in a cost-neutral result to the city? Is that before us today?
Well, again, these are options other than BFI. The BFI contract...
No, no, I, I... Just answer my question, please. Is there an option before us today that would have the city's negotiators go into BFI and insist that whatever the result is be cost-neutral to the city?
You know, certainly the council can direct that.
But is that before, come on, is that before us today in terms of what's been presented so far?
No, that's not before you today.
That is, in fact, what we should be doing. We should be guarding the city's treasury, we should be doing our fiduciary duty and making sure that whatever happens, it's cost-neutral. That's my concern.
Is that a motion, Mr. Weiss, for instruction in terms of our negotiations with BFI?
I'm still, let me hear more of what's...
No, okay. Mr. Rosendahl?
Thank you, Mr. President. My guts are going toward option B, but I would like to have the two potential waste shed folks to come on up to the table. I'd like to ask them a few questions. Could we get them up there? Waste Management and the other group that are option B. One is the Sobrante firm, and the other one is MDSI. Come on up. And stay there, Jerry. Hold my time. Good morning, gentlemen. Introduce yourselves.
My name is Doug Corcoran, I'm with Waste Management.
Scott Tribber with MDSI.
Good morning, and thanks for coming here. Environmental questions. First of all, are there any homes around the areas where these waste dumps are? Both of you, either one?
Well, I guess around about a mile from the site.
Is there any water aquifer underneath, or any other environmental issues to be sensitive to?
There are aquifers all around Southern California. El Sobrante is lined, it's completely lined and has leach aid collection systems to prevent any release from the landfill into any waters beneath the landfill.
Same question for you. Is your dump near where people live?
Our landfill is located within the city limits of the city of Avonall. The closest house is about a quarter mile away from where the waste would be deposited.
And have you lined your waste?
The first line cell is under construction.
And will it be completed if we bring some of our trash to your location?
Yes.
And what kind of lining do you use?
The full composite liner, the prescription that the water board requires.
And is your community aware that if we do start dumping our refuge there, that over time it might become a significant landfill?
That's what their hope is, actually. We have letters of support, unanimous letters of support from the city council and Kings County to bring Los Angeles' waste to the landfill.
And so you said, a resident is a quarter mile away?
The closest one, yes.
And are all of those neighbors aware that there might be trucks coming and dumping?
Very aware, sir. We've gone through a full EIR process, just completed it last year, received waste board, water board permits, everything, multiple public hearings. Everyone's fully aware.
Both of you, what is the price per ton?
Say again?
Price per ton for the garbage?
Our price per ton that we have in the proposal is $13 per ton.
$13 a ton?
$13 per ton.
Yes, and our price is $28 a ton.
$28 a ton. So on yours, $13 a ton, we'd actually be saving money from the standpoint of the dump. But the transportation cost would be great.
That is correct, sir.
Who's the one up the grapevine and over it?
That's us, sir.
What happens if the grapevine is closed? How do we deal with the trucks moving?
That's an excellent question. And in this scenario, well, first of all, there are five different routes that can be taken. It's not just the grapevine. But secondly, if there is some sort of a short-term weather delay, perhaps the trucks go to El Sobrante for that couple hours, or they go to Sunshine for that couple of hours.
These are my biggest concerns, is A, community, B, environment, and obviously the environment is the number-one concern. Do you have aquifer issues and other things like that?
It's a very good question. Again, the Avonall landfill, as every landfill in the state, would have some groundwater beneath it. But in our particular case, the water is not drinkable. It's brackish water. Plus, it's 700-plus feet down, and there's a whole series of natural barriers, or soil barriers, so it's an ideal location for landfill.
Saying that, what's your capacity?
Our landfill is currently permitted to handle 6,000 tons per day. We are the closest landfill to the city of Los Angeles that can handle all of the city's waste, closest landfill that can handle all the city's waste except for Sunshine Canyon. We currently have 36 million tons, 36 million cubic yards of permitted capacity, and the city of Avonall actually wants to expand the landfill beyond that.
And how about you?
We've got about a 50-year life, at 10,000 tons a day. And actually, El Sobrante could also handle all of the city's waste if you so chose.
Is there a possibility of getting rail to either one of your two locations rather than trucks?
It's not really a feasible possibility at El Sobrante. And actually, with the distance from the city to El Sobrante being 60 miles or less, it doesn't really make economic sense to put it on a rail. The amount of infrastructure costs that are related to building a facility...
The amount of infrastructure costs that are related to building a facility in the city, and then building facilities at the disposal facility, when you start to add all of that up, you actually need to, you need to move large volumes of waste out, and it really makes sense once you get beyond a certain mileage.
Good, thank you. And your answer?
We are actively in the process of developing the rail infrastructure, both at the landfill, there’s already rail close by our landfill, as well as in the LA basin. We have several projects, as a matter of fact, I’m working on one this afternoon.
So theoretically, we might not have to have trucks going over and doing that, and it could go on a rail track?
That’s the hope, yes. That’s the plan, I should say.
Well, I want to thank the two of you for stepping to the table, and, Mr. President, the idea, I remember seven months ago with Sunshine Canyon, I felt we had a gun to our head, that we were just dealing with one outfit, they said drop-dead dates, and they gave us all this sense that we had no options, there was nothing we could do, and then all of a sudden, we got a six-month extension. From a standpoint of the city having options, being able to have choices for where our refuge goes, it’s obviously in our best interest to do that, and I heartily support the option B of my colleague Greg Smith. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Rosendahl. Ms. Hahn is our next speaker, to be followed by Mr. Weezer, Mr. Padilla Smith, and Cardenas for second times.
Thank you, Mr. President. I’m interested in this concept of sort of economic development and jobs at Avonall. Can you talk a little bit more about why there’s a hope that actually, this does become a full-fledged landfill, and actually, more trash comes your way? Explain that to us, because we don’t think like that.
It’s not as... It’s really not as unusual of a concept as it might seem to a city that has a chronic landfill issue. I’m sorry. But the city of Avonall looks at the landfill as an economic engine. It’s a way for them to bring in additional jobs. The landfill could generate as much as $4 million a year in additional general fund revenue for the city. They’re looking at doing all sorts of things with it, including police, fire, all of the typical things you would want to do with the extra money that would be coming in from this. They’re talking about a whole bunch of economic development issues related to low-income housing, and public assistance for education, all sorts of things.
Well, you know, that’s encouraging. I mean, actually, this, I hate to use this concept, but it’s actually a win-win situation. You’ve got two places, El Sobrante and Avonall, that want our trash, and I’ll tell you what, the trash train idea has been around for a long time, and that’s something that we should actually all get behind, because that, we all know that rail is cleaner than trucks any day. In fact, many of the rail companies are now, the technology exists to have hybrid engines on trains to make it cleaner, so that’s really a good idea. And I will say, I’m also leaning towards the B concept, because I think it does make sense to sort of split up our trash, particularly to two places that actually want it. Avonall could actually be, it could be a good thing for them, positive in terms of economic development and jobs. And I will say, Councilman Weiss, that I’m not making this decision and somehow saying that that’s going to cost the residents of Los Angeles 16 cops or 19 cops, and I want to go on the record to say that every time a concept has come to this council, whether it’s a half-cent sales tax, or whether it was our VLF swap money, I have voted every time for more cops, and I know that we’re all in agreement that we still want to find a way to hire 1,000 new cops. I know our mayor is working on that concept, and you know what, this seems like the same argument sometimes they told me about the harbor, that we could either have jobs, or we could have clean air. Well, you know what, we can have both, and I think that means more to the Valley than for us to have our council meetings there, or to actually stand by something that they’ve been asking for a long time, which is find a way to begin weaning ourselves off Sunshine Canyon, and I think this is a way we can do that. I think this sends a message. So in no way am I going to vote to send our trash to these other places, begin weaning our way off Sunshine Canyon, begin diverting more trash anyway through recycling, and then somehow that’s going to cost the city 16 cops or 19 cops. So I’m here to say, that’s not going to be the case, and I don’t think that’s the decision before us. We all want to hire more cops, and I think we’re going to do that. So I’m leaning towards option B, I think that makes sense, but I will go on the record to say again, the real, the real mission for all of us, even though some of these cities and landfills will make money off of us and all of our trash, our real goal, we must stay committed to that, is diverting more trash from landfills, and I still think we have got to be a lot stronger in recycling. My mother still lives in a multifamily apartment complex in San Pedro that does not provide recycling. That’s ridiculous. That’s not right. She’s been a recycler as long as I’ve known her, and for her to move into this place in San Pedro, which does not have recycling, is wrong, and I think we ought to move towards making sure that everybody has an opportunity to have curbside valet recycling in every part of this city. That will mean less trash to landfill wherever we send it. Thank you, Greg, for your leadership on that.
Thank you, Ms. Hahn. Mr. Weezer is our next speaker.
Thank you. And first of all, thanks to Mr. Smith and our council president for bringing this item to us. I think this transparency and discussion that we’re having here, not only amongst our peers, but the public, is a very good one. I think it’s good to have several steps before we get to the final decision, so thank you so much. My cost is on, my question is on costs. This is a per-year incremental cost, correct?
That’s correct.
And the extension of the contract is for five years?
That’s correct.
So we could also see it as a, let’s say the option A would be 1.5, what’s that, 7.5 or so additional in costs for this contract?
Yes, that’s right.
That’s another way of looking at it.
That’s right.
And option B would be, if you rounded up to 2 million, that’s $10 million more for this contract. That’s another way of looking at it.
Exactly.
Okay. And in terms of administrative costs, if we start diverting, and our staff needs to change the way it does business, our staff now needs to deal with different types of agencies, different organizations, there’s administrative costs that are not in this figure you gave us here today, right? This is purely the purchase and sale of trash costs, correct?
Well, the option A does have administrative, actually, both options have administrative costs in them.
Includes the administrative costs within our department.
Yeah, now, the bureau may want to address this. I think part of their concern when they proposed option A is there’s a bit more uncertainty on the Avonall side, because it’s much further, but the intent is, I’m sorry, option B. But as best as we’re able to estimate it, there are additional administrative costs here. I will add, however, that in committee, also, the issue of AQMD came up, and I would say in either case, we would need to be dealing with them. They indicated, they were unclear as to what their enforcement abilities would be on requiring additional cleaner trucks. And again, I think Ms. Ruiz or the bureau spoke with them, but their estimate on both options would be about 17 new trucks if, they would like to see 17 new trucks. If we went to El Sobrante, they would like to see 51 new clean trucks if we were going to Avonall. So those estimates are anywhere from $2.5 to $11 million. However, that being said, they were unclear in committee, and if we get a deal with BFI, and if we move forward with this, one of the issues we would also have to do is work with city attorney on determining what AQMD’s enforcement mechanisms would be, so.
Which, today, we don’t have a good sense of what the environmental impacts would be, not so much on the site themselves, because I assume the state and federal regulations and guidelines will determine whether we’re being safer or not, but the transport and the environmental impacts on local neighborhoods, will there be any, what can we expect with additional traveling that’s in...
If we can ask the two representatives to just maybe sit in the front row, we’ll hold your time, and ask our staff and the bureau to come forward. Thank you.
Good morning, council member Enrique Zaldivar, Assistant Director with the Bureau of Sanitation. Just on the environmental issues, we have quantified the air emissions that could potentially be generated as a result of either option, as Jerry mentioned. We have consensus with AQMD of what those might conceivably be. There, we have consensus, and we handed out a series of charts that depicted those emissions from either option. With respect to the additional trucks and things like that, we’ve quantified that in the form of miles, total additional miles that we would be driving on a yearly basis in either option, and so, in the case of option B, we’re saying that we would be driving on an annual basis 1,39,500 miles more between option, option B more than A, total, per year.
And what impact does that have on our neighborhoods?
Well, considering that most of the travel would be done on freeway highways, not necessarily traversing residential neighborhoods, per se, then we took the impact to be more on the emissions than on street traffic.
And is that significant? Does it alarm AQMD, or does it raise any issues with air quality?
We have a representative from AQMD here.
Good morning, I’m Henry Hoga with the South Coast AQMD. The emissions that were given to us, if we look at this scenario today where you just go simply Sunshine Canyon, equates to about eight tons per year of nitrogen oxide emissions. The miles to Corona itself, just 100% to El Sobrante, would be about 17 tons per year, so almost double in emissions. For the Avonall scenario, 100% to Avonall is about 53 tons per year. So we’re seeing increase. We believe, as a responsible agency on air, that the excess emissions should be mitigated to the maximum extent possible.
And if we go one step further and translate the additional emissions that we get, are you comfortable with these additional emissions that will be, the impacts?
We generally rely on the staff, because your staff knows the business of the operations, so the assumptions on the miles is equated, are equated back to emissions, and we use that to calculate the number of clean vehicles that could offset the excess emissions.
And you’re simply reporting to us what the emissions are, and letting us decide whether we’re comfortable with that or not, but I’m not sure, as a layperson and not familiar with emissions, if I should be concerned or not. Should we be concerned? That’s what I’m trying to get at. Should we be concerned? Should the residents of Los Angeles and all the other impact, other communities where we get these additional trucks traveling through there, should we be concerned?
I think we all should be concerned, because...
Please hold my time.
As we look at the region to achieve clean air, we need every bit of emission reduction we can get, and in this case, the emissions are exacerbated, so we’re going backwards in a sense, because there’ll be increased emissions, as we look to reducing emissions from all the other sectors. So we do need to try and offset as best as possible.
And aside from more travel time, mileage, and emissions, any other environmental impacts that we should be concerned with, if we do A or B? Please hold my time.
The, you know, obviously, with the additional miles comes additional fuel consumption, and you know, to the extent that there’s an increased dependency on fuel, I mean, if that can be construed as a, as an impact of some sort. But outside of what you mentioned, council member, we, on the environmental side...
That’s what we should focus on. Okay. Thank you. I’m just trying to elicit here, I’m not trying to place judgment on whether, right now, I believe one option is better than the other, but I just want to put on the table the trade-offs that we have to make with one option over the other, and includes not only costs, and I’m happy to hear that the administrative costs are included in that, so if the Department of Public Works is not going to come back to us and say, “Well, if you allocate this additional funding,” they’ll come back to us and say, “Oh, but we need additional staff, we need additional trucks, we need additional equipment,” that that money is included there, and we won’t get surprises if, in fact, all the administrative costs are there. Environmental impacts, that’s something that I’m highly concerned with, because not only emissions and mileage, but the additional, well, it is mostly the mileage and people, the additional trucks we’re going to put out there, and possibility of carrying the type of cargo that we do not want any potential risk to take place on our highways, but those are all trade-offs that I just want to put on the table if we go to one or the other options. Thank you.
Thank you. I’d like to acknowledge Ms. Perry, followed by Mr. Padilla, Mr. Cardenas, and Mr. Smith.
Thank you very much, Madam Chair. I brought this issue up in committee, and I’m appreciative of the fact that AQMD is represented here today, that regardless of the outcome, or which option we choose as a council body, that we amend the report from staff to include using contractors who have already embraced the concept of clean or alternative fuel vehicles, and to work closely with AQMD and sanitation and partnership to develop a strategy, so that whatever option is, results from our conversation, that we do it with emissions strategy, emissions reduction strategy in mind, is that’s not something we have in place currently. And I don’t know if I should do that as an amendment or a motion, maybe the city attorney can recommend, but I amended the report in our ad hoc meeting.
Ms. Clark?
Yeah, you could do that as an amendment.
Okay.
And it needs a second.
Have a second?
Second.
Okay.
All right, Mr. Padilla.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Colleagues, I’m actually encouraged by the discussion today, when this item was before the joint-joint committees just last week. I’m glad we pressed for option B to be forwarded to the council for consideration in addition to option A, and it’s specifically because more options, more viable alternatives is better than less, in my opinion. And here we are, sitting here with not just Sunshine Canyon as our only alternative to what we do with our trash, but two additional ones, as opposed to one additional one, or no additional alternatives. I will respectfully take difference with Mr. Weiss’s comment earlier about the costs and the incremental costs here, because you do not insert that discussion when we talk about housing, and building less housing for the purposes of hiring more police officers. We do not insert that consideration in our conversations about parks, and argue to build less park space for Los Angeles, so that we can hire more police officers. Our city government is charged with balancing all of our priorities, and trying to maximize the use and the impact of our city resources, and trying to be efficient with our dollars, and maximize the dollars that we have to work with. So I don’t believe that argument applies to this case either, because you cannot put a dollar figure on the health and safety of our city residents. We have an opportunity today, we have an opportunity, I hope next week, to take a giant leap towards that landfill-free city that we all say we want, that we all dream about, and unlike five years ago, when we last considered the contract extension with BFI, we have these viable alternatives to consider, and I’m glad we’re actually doing that. I too prefer option B to option A, simply because it spreads out our risk, in my opinion. We have more facilities to work with, and if you have a problem on a daily basis, or systemically at one of the facilities, you have more backup options. I think that makes sense for the city, it may be incrementally more expensive, but again, I think it’s just a better risk management practice to have. Colleagues, I wanted to speak again, also for the reason of encouraging our CLA, who, from my understanding, is our lead negotiator here. I asked earlier if we had to make a decision today or not, if we were simply putting off this decision until next week, depending on how the BFI negotiations were going. It’s clear to me, colleagues, and it’s clear to me and Mr. Miller, that for the council to take a firm stand today, to take decisive action today, that we recognize there are other viable alternatives, and we may even be willing to pay just a little bit more to exercise those viable alternatives, only helps our negotiations with BFI. So if that, if you agree, or unless you significantly disagree, tell us that. Ask us for that type of action, ask us for that type of statement to help you at the negotiating table.
I do agree, Mr. Padilla. I was answering a little literal question, but yes, it is helpful, and it is important for the council to express its resolve, that you do intend and very much desire to divert a part of the trash, and there is some amount of money you’re willing to pay in addition to that. That is absolutely true.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Padilla. Ms. Gruel.
Thank you, Madam President. Colleagues...
Uh, thank you, Madam President. Uh, colleagues, I wanted to stand as well and, um, have, we've all heard this in several committees, but we did have the joint meeting, or I guess it was a special meeting of the City Council because we had so many members. Um, and I think a lot of the comments that have been made today, um, are very clear. This is a different council than five years ago. Um, this is a different council, uh, who did not five years ago begin the process of actually getting us out of Sunshine Canyon. Uh, we stood, um, a week or, I guess it was probably a week or so ago, uh, in, in almost a unanimous kind of position, which we have, again, not been in before, uh, where there has been differing opinions about where we need to go. We are now in a position that we are saying, as, as all the council members have said, and, and Ms. Hahn, I would, I almost thought you lived and worked in the valley in your comments, um, because you're, you're, you're right on. It's a compliment, I know. Uh, that, uh, we need to demonstrate that we are going to recycle more and it's not just moving our trash somewhere else. It is actually reducing the amount of trash that we are putting into landfills. It is looking at rail. It is looking at our options. Um, colleagues, we all know, uh, whatever we are negotiating, whatever position we are in, that if you only have one option, you have no leverage. Uh, if you stand there and you have a negotiation, and that's why we're in this position today, uh, because we only went in one direction. There is a value, um, to us looking, a dollar value and I think a moral value to saying we are going to diversify, we are going to divert our, uh, trash to other locations, uh, so that as we look at our options in the future, we are not standing here, uh, with companies that say, "We don't care what you want or what you do because we're in a different position, uh, today." And I think that's the message we are trying to say today. In committee, uh, we talked about both A and B. There wasn't kind of clear. We wanted to have both of these options come forward to the council so we could have this kind of discussion, maybe noodle a little bit more on the numbers and so forth. I too am leaning towards option B, uh, in the, in our era, again, of looking at ways in which we can find options that allow us to, to be in a position that we have several partners, not just one partner as we're looking forward. Uh, so I think we are sending a message that this is a different city. It is a different city council, and we're standing together strongly. Uh, we're standing together to send that message. And so, um, I, uh, too, am leaning towards the B option. We'll look, I know that if we adopt whether it be A or B, there are negotiations that will have to ensue. Um, and we'll look to Jerry's skills, um, and Rita's and others, Enrique's, to how we do that negotiations. We are not, um, I think, blind to looking at the environmental issues that I think are critical. Um, and appreciate you, you being here. And, uh, I think that is something that is the top of our list. Um, and that's one of the reasons we're looking at having the B option so we can see what the kinds of impacts are and how we can look at financially and our truck purchases, et cetera. So, thank you, Madam President. Appreciate it. And thank you, colleagues, for us standing up unanimously saying, uh, "We're going to change the way we do business." Thank you.
Thank you very much, Ms. Gruel. Mr. Cardenas.
Me?
Yeah.
Thank you. Um, I'm glad that we're discussing this matter and we're also, uh, causing ourselves headaches, causing the department headaches, uh, because unfortunately, I think that the reason why we do have all of our eggs in one basket is because one big company said, "We can relieve you of a lot of headaches, but just bring your trash to us." And when we did that, it was the most dollar-efficient thing to do at the time. And it still might be the most dollar-efficient thing to do today. But if we don't figure out a way to wean ourselves off of depending on one particular source of doing business, then we're never going to get out of that mindset. We're never going to cross that hurdle because the hurdle is large. The hurdle is tall. But the bottom line is, we have to learn how to do that. This is a very tough decision. The cost between doing business the way we do it today versus option A is over a million dollars, right? Difference, roughly. Enrique?
Yes.
Between A and B, yes.
Yeah, over a million dollars. The option B is a few hundred thousand dollars more. And I'm not belittling the value of a thousand dollars or 10,000 dollars or what have you. But in that cost comes other costs. The political will to do the right thing. The political will to change the way we do business in the city of Los Angeles. I think that's more important to focus on than the million dollars. And for any, I don't know how that was brought up, but for anybody to characterize this to have anything to do with cops or what have you is just ridiculous. Because then we'll get into other issues of, why aren't we not even charging the right amount of money for our trash so that we don't take it out of the general fund where we pay for cops and firefighters? So, I don't even think that that should even be brought up today. What we should be focusing on, the fact that we are being held by a particular company hostage over the idea that they are not going to work with us to change the way we do business. That we're stuck with them. It's black or white, all or nothing. I think that's wrong. I think that we should take a vote today because we do need to not just send a message, we need to act with our vote. That's what we are elected to do on this side of the table. We act with our votes. We talk a lot, but we act with our votes. And it's time that we act like we've been talking. We want to relieve the way sheds within the city of trash. We want to make sure that we set a pace and a standard for other cities and other communities to hopefully follow the lead. The next generation of which Mr. Smith has been working very hard on, and some of us have been working, uh, in some bits and pieces with him, is the idea of actually going to new technologies and things of that nature. That's after today. But today, we need to take a vote. We need to do the right thing. And we should remind ourselves, the reason why we're in this situation, the reason why one company can say all or nothing and threaten us that way is because we allowed ourselves to be in that position. Option B is the best option we have before us to start moving in a direction where we will not be held to that condition ever again. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Cardenas. Mr. Rosendahl.
Uh, thank you, Madam President. Um, Rita?
Good morning.
Uh, we've talked about recycling quite a bit in the last six or seven months. Um, I want to hear how, um, we take the 700 independent haulers and, and get them to do recycling and tell us what is the best strategy to get, um, the development plans of every new project? Because Mrs. Hahn, Senior, can't even do recycling in her apartment complex. So, going forward, and we're going to put a motion in next week, um, that all new construction has to have the recycling capability within their complexes as they build them. Enough space to have the separation, chutes that do the separation, and most importantly, the haulers that do the multifamily units, both apartments and condos, and the commercial part of the recycling, get in the program now. Help us out with that a bit.
The Bureau has been working over the last year to bring in all the multifamily units. And then you're talking about a change of behavior. These are not units we pick up from. These are private haulers. So, we're working simultaneously on getting them to buy into it because it's a cost measure and a profit measure. But also looking at the, simultaneously looking at franchising that, where we would take it over and mandate it so we could have both processes working. But our hope is to have them come online with regard to wanting to do this and finding it profitable for them to do it as a, as, as part of their business. But on the other hand, because the franchising process takes quite a bit of time. It takes five to seven years is to try to bring them online so they'll be doing it in spite of the franchise.
And how about all new construction?
Well, that, that would be part of your motion to mandate that through building and safety is, and all new construction development, that that be included in their plans and processes through planning and, um, their, um, development of property. So, building and safety would probably best speak to that than me, than me in that respect.
And I say to my colleagues that as we go forward, then maybe next week or the week after, as, as we deal with the Sunshine Canyon thing, I'll be putting in motions, and I want everybody to support them if they would, that we actually go into separating out garbage in those other two areas, commercial, um, and MDUs, both residential, you know, condominiums and apartments. But, uh, the planning department, building and safety, we want to put them on notice now. And we want to put the developers on notice now. When you come through with your plans going forward for your new projects, uh, you must think of recycling as a critical part of building that particular structure.
Right. I think it goes hand in hand with, with the council's mandate to, to have sustainable buildings and sustainable situations. That this plays hand in hand with that entire, um, mandate that you have already set forth. So, I, I think that that would be, that would help us in the long run regardless of whether it's the residents we pick up from or residents, private haulers.
And, and as we go forward with this, because I don't want to let garbage disappear again as an issue, uh, which it will in a few months because things, you know, tend to then not brought up again. I, I want you to come back at a certain point with a good marketing plan of how people now who have the blue bin, the green bin, and, and the black bin know exactly what they can put in the blue bin. We just heard the other day, you can put coat hangers as well as the plastic in it. There's lots of things that we, the people, need to know so we can be more responsible in our recycling.
Oh, absolutely. That was one of the things I mentioned in the joint committee meeting is that, you know, clarification of what could go from black to blue needs to be addressed as well as any other things that we can do to make it easier for people. Because nine times out of 10, people aren't going to look under their, their cottage cheese container and determine which, does it go in recycling or not. So, we're looking at some ways that we could certify that certain things are recyclable or not, like a city seal of some type. So, that, that way recycling becomes part of your nature. It, you know, and it's a, you, you have to make it easy for people to participate in. I mean, even though seatbelts save people's lives, it was years before people actually wanted to do it or were, you know, forced basically mandated to do it, even though people were dying every day as a result of not doing it. And this is life-threatening from a different standpoint, from an environmental standpoint. So, we want to make it easy for people to do.
Now, I'd like to suggest, I don't know how we do this though, that the manufacturers of all the products that we, the people, buy, that if we take that box home or we take that object home, there's a little note there that says, "This is recyclable."
Right. Something like that.
So, that we simply can say, "Oh, this is recyclable. It's going to go in the blue bin."
And those are some of the things that the staff have been working on to try to make it easier for people to do. As I said, there's at least 400 tons a day more that we know could go from black to blue.
Beautiful.
And that's, those are the things we want to first clarify, educate, you know, to get their participation. Because as we go down this road, the idea of recycling is a participatory situation. And remember that it is a voluntary situation. And we, we have it right now. So, as I said, if we go from clarification to education to participation, then the question, will, will you want to go to enforcement? Because that, that would be the next level that you would have to go to, to verify and validate tonnage's reductions on a day-to-day basis.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Mr. Rosendahl. Mr. Smith to close.
Thank you very much, Madam President. Uh, I think it's been a very healthy process, not just the discussion today, but how we got here over the last six to nine months. Discussions that would have never taken place 10 years ago. So, I congratulate the council for its vision and for its ability to move forward. What you have before you today is options A and B. I think, as I stated when we opened, that this gives Mr. Miller and the negotiating team a very strong statement to BFI, that we are not moving away from our commitment, that we've made it in August, we made it again last week and the week before, that we want 600 tons out in BFI. That is the resolve of the City Council now. So, with the selection of A or B today, we are resolving, that we are firm on our position. We're telling BFI, "That's our position." And that is a negotiating tool, I think, that will help you, if I'm not mistaken, Mr. Miller. Is that correct?
That's right.
Thank you very much. I appreciate that. To Mr. Weiss's comments about police, you know, if we put, and I, and I so much appreciate Mr. Padilla and, and Mr. Cardenas and everyone's comments about, you cannot equate everything to cops. And I'm a cop. I'd be the first one to say, "Let's do that if it was possible." But if we do that, then let's get rid of our homeless program. That's $10 million because we could get more cops. We're not going to do that for a moment because that is important. If it's really important, Mr. Weiss, then let's get rid of the $1.2 million budget that we all have and get rid of our staffs. Because that's 12 cops. The point is, you can't equate everything by how many cops it's going to hire. I brought to this council last summer an idea of using three, uh, our VLF money to hire 300 new officers. You know what, folks? We're not going to get it done this year because we can't find enough good candidates to fill our academy. And so, we can't equate everything to cops. We can't seem to hire them anyway, even when we do have the money. But the nice thing is, the police department is funded directly from the general fund. Sanitation is funded from general fund, but we also have the SEC charge available to us. And so, you put it in context of the SEC charge, ladies and gentlemen, to do this project today, to divert the 600 tons today would be a 25 cents increase to the SEC charge. An un, a totally negligible amount of money. And so, I think Ms. Hahn and Mr. Padilla and Mr. Cardenas were right on when they said, "We don't put it in those terms." We have a responsibility as a government to fund all those things that are important to the people in a relationship that we feel we can afford and is best for the people to provide all those services and not just one. Because if it's only about police and fire, well, let's get rid of the other 38 departments of the city and let's just be a police and fire department. That's not what we do. And so, I think we have a very strong statement. I've read the council's opinion here today. I see that we want to move today. I think we must move forward. Give Mr. Miller those negotiating tools he needs. Make the very strong statement, "It's time to move on." Substantiate our, our ruling last August and move on with the contract today. I think B gives the alternatives we need because there's two contractors that we can work with. And if we ever need that option to expand one way or the other, we have options available, which we have never had before. So, I thank you for the discussion today. I move B. Thank you very much.
Is there a second to option B?
There's a strong argument.
And, uh, just for clarification, that would be, you would be adopting the balance of the committee report, recommendations two, three, four, and five, and then option B? That, just for clarification, that would be adopting the balance of the recommendations on the committee report, two, three, four, five, and option B. Do, okay. Do you wish to vote on option B separately?
Um, well, I'm moving option B. We brought to the table A and B. I'm moving B. And then if there's anyone who wants to move A, we can vote for them separately. But I'm moving B.
So, Madam Clerk, for purposes of clarification, what is B for us?
Uh, it would be the committee report, uh, and, well, I believe council should vote on option B first since that was submitted without recommendation. And there is a motion on that. And then adopt the committee report plus, uh, your amendment. And item number, this for number seven, and item number five is continued to next week.
Are we ready to open the roll?
Okay, so item, that would be option B.
Open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
10 ayes, 1 no.
And now the balance of the committee report.
Open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
10 ayes, 1 no.
And, and for clarification, item number five is continued for one week. Uh, and for clarification, item number five is continued till March 17th.
If there is no objection, uh, because of the change in time of today's council meeting, we will reopen public comment. First person, uh, is, do we need to make a motion? Okay, Brianna Golding, followed by Courtney Tanaguchi, followed by Michelle Lesnar. Brianna Golding.
Hi. I'm Brianna Golding. I'm 16 years old. I go to Crossroads School and I'm in the 10th grade. The zoo claims that elephants are necessary to be in the zoo to educate its visitors. We, in fact, went to the zoo and made a video to prove that nothing is being learned from the exhibit that cannot be learned from seeing a photograph of an elephant. I admit, seeing an elephant in the zoo is exciting. However, in the zoo, an elephant is confined to a limited space and is not able to exhibit natural behavior. Furthermore, we propose the idea of a live webcam where visitors can see live videos of elephants in Africa. This video could also feature various professors and zoologists speaking about the elephants. Doing this would be much less expensive and certainly more educational. It would benefit the visitors, the budget, and of course, the elephants. It's a win-win-win situation. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Courtney Tanaguchi.
Hi, I'm Courtney Tanaguchi. I'm 16 years old. I go to Crossroads School and I'm in 10th grade. The millions of dollars to be spent on the elephant exhibit could be used in many different ways. Since the zoo claims that they want to educate their visitors, why not instead use the money to better enhance public schools? The money would be going directly towards education as the zoo wanted. Or perhaps the money could be used to help the hundreds of poor animals in the pound, or to be used in homeless shelters. There is an infinite amount of ways to spend this money. And each way is more beneficial than a bit larger, although still substandard elephant exhibit. In fact, the elephant exhibit isn't the only one in need of reconstruction. Why not use the money towards other animals in the zoo who need space and assistance? Many zoos across the country, such as San- Many zoos across the country, such as San Francisco and Detroit, are closing their elephant exhibits because they realize they cannot meet the needs of an elephant. Los Angeles is such a cutting edge city. Why isn't LA doing the same? Thank you.
Thank you very much. Joni Manella.
Hello, I am Michelle Lesnar. I'm 15 years old and I go to Crossroads School and I'm in 10th grade. Having elephants in the zoo is not at all educational. In late 2005, we went to the Los Angeles Zoo and interviewed children and adults to ask them about what they learned by visiting the elephant exhibit. A common answer was, they're big, or they have large trunks. It was clear to us that these were not substantial answers, nor were they intellectual. We then asked our participants what they knew about dinosaurs and the the answers varied in such degrees, from the types of dinosaurs to what they ate to how they survived. We were flabbergasted by how much was known about a species that was extinct over 65 million years ago, as opposed to how much, how little they knew about an animal that was standing right in front of them. It was clear to us that elephants bring no educational value to the zoo and should not be kept there for educational purposes. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Janie Manella or Joni Manella? Joni Manella. Okay. Ally Eagle.
Hi, I'm Ally Eagle. I'm 16 years old and I go to Crossroads School and I'm in 10th grade. And I'm going to read a a letter by the Crossroads Middle School headmaster, Morgan Schwartz. I write regarding the elephant enclosure and proposed remodeling project at the LA Zoo. Proudly born and raised in Los Angeles, I have many wonderful memories from the zoo. As a 20-plus years educator, I see the resources of the zoo through educational eyes while simultaneously considering the place of the zoo from my backyard as a natural scientist. This letter is intended to be supportive rather than confrontational and touches on elements of educational value, conservation, economics, and public relations. My wife and I spent a month in Tanzania and saw animals, including herds of elephants, in their natural settings. In addition, we establish a relationship with elephant researchers, Charles and Laura Foley, spending a day with them in elephant herds in the fields as well as hosting their visits to Los Angeles for a presentation at the Natural History Museum. I strongly encourage you to consider the building of a multimedia auditorium in place of the elephant enclosure. Such a project could set the LA Zoo apart from others by defining a viable and current option as well as providing a link to the future by tapping the interests of people everywhere. One, educational value. I am convinced that there is much more educational value available in the option provided by a multimedia theater that features such things as live webcam connections. See the National Geographic Society's Wild Cam Africa website where I recently watched and listened to one adolescent male elephant spend an entire day submerged into the in the pond using his trunk as a snorkel. To various parts of the world as well as being able to feature films and host presentations by experts. There's, should I get, can I keep going?
Thank you very much. Thank you. Next speaker is Eden Orlando.
Hi, I'm Eden Orlando and I'm 16 years old. I live in Venice at Crossroads, I go to Crossroads School and I'm in the 11th grade. We are here today hoping that we can help you understand the uselessness of keeping these three elephants in the Los Angeles Zoo and agree that the best thing would be to let them be sent to a sanctuary. We ask you, members of the City Council, what could be better for them than placing these elephants on 2,300 acres of green, grassy, hilly, and flat lands where everything is alive and beautiful? What could be better for them than letting them take hot mud baths, roam as they want with their fellow giants, not to be trained with bull hooks and have 24-hour keeper care? These elephants are special and need more care and supervision than the zoo is able to give them. There is no reason for these elephants to suffer from hard concrete or barren dirt. Seeing the elephants in their natural setting actually happy are what really matters and what is truly educational. We see no reason for keeping these elephants, Billy, Gita, and Ruby. These elephants are beautiful and awe inspiring. They feel and think and deserve the right to be happy. So we ask you, as compassionate and fellow beings, to do the right and humane thing for these elephants and at last allow them freedom and sanctuary. Thank you.
Thank you very much for your public comment. This closes public comment again and thank you all for coming down and your patience as well as we reopened that and that clears the desk, Madam Clerk?
The council has motions for posting and referral.
Okay, post and refer those.
Their excuses on the desk. Councilmember Perry requests to be excused March 31st for city business and March 17th to leave at 10:30. A motion is required.
Okay, Mr. Padilla moves. Mr. Weisar seconds. If there's no objection, that'll be unanimous vote.
And Councilmember Weisar requests to be excused Friday, April 17th, excuse me, April 7th for city personal business and Friday, March 17th to arrive at 9:45 for city business. A motion is required on the March 17th.
Okay, for March 17th, Mr. Weiss moves and Mr. Smith seconds. If there's no objection, that'll be a unanimous vote.
And that clears the desk.
Okay. Announcements, colleagues? One announcement, just to remind folks from the public and members of the council, we will be in recess on Tuesday and Wednesday of this coming week. There will be no regularly scheduled council meeting. We certainly will be hard at work, though, as the City Council goes to Washington DC for the National League of Cities Advocacy Conference in which we will be meeting with members of Congress on issues of importance to the residents of Los Angeles. So our next scheduled meeting will be at 9:00 AM again next Friday, March 17th, St. Patrick's Day, and we will be in session then. Also, following this council meeting, colleagues, we will be having a press conference at noon that everybody is invited to discuss our trip to Washington and our legislative agenda and we look forward to seeing as many of you there as can make it. Any other announcements? Mr. Smith, announcement? No? Any other announcements, colleagues? Seeing none, if I can please ask everybody to rise for adjourning motions at this time. Okay, adjourning motions. Ms. Grule first.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have two adjourning motions. I'd ask the council to join me. One is for Paige Ackerman. She passed away on February 28th. She was 93 years old. She was a native of Evanston, Illinois and enrolled in the Westwood campus of UCLA, which was at that time named the Southern Branch of the University of California in 1929. She transferred as a junior to Agnes Scott College in Decatur, Georgia on a physical education scholarship as a junior and earned a bachelor's degree in English in 1993. She joined the UCLA library staff in 1949 from the Union Theological Seminary in Richmond, Virginia. And in 1973, she was named university librarian, a position she held until her retirement in 1977. She was the first woman in the country to lead such a large and complex library system. Services will be held on March 18th at 2:00 PM at Royal Oaks Manor in North Bradbury, California. And I'd like to also ask us to adjourn in memory of Clara Fabian. She passed away unfortunately yesterday, Wednesday, March 8th, 2006. She was an escapee from the from Hungary of the Holocaust. Clara remained throughout her life a diligent advocate for the ongoing plight of all Jews and people in need. Services are scheduled for 12:00 noon today, March 10th, at the Mount Sinai Memorial Park in Hollywood Hills. And the family requests that in lieu of flowers, that donations are made to the Simon Wiesenthal Center here in Los Angeles. She is survived by her daughter, which is Wendy Fabian Brogan, many of you know, and her son-in-law, Nate Brogan, and grandchildren, Lori, Jennifer, and Michael, and asks that we adjourn in her memory and maybe all members.
All members, Mr. Padilla, Mr. Smith, all members. You wish to say anything on that? Okay. Are there adjourning motions? Ms. Hahn.
Thank you, council. And I know you adjourned your meeting this week in memory of Moss Fukai. I was unable to be here, so I just wanted to add my few words about what a great public servant Moss Fukai was. And I know you, a lot of good things were probably said about him, but I didn't want it to go left unsaid that really his, his, one of his passions in life was taking kids off the street and turning them around from lives of drugs and gangs and getting them involved in sports. And he was instrumental in creating a youth sports foundation, which still exists today, which really gives kids an alternative to the life of gangs. And of course, my dad tapped him as a supervisor, as a deputy in 1975 and Moss ultimately became my dad's chief deputy and was with him until my dad stepped down in 1992. And he was just really, as a councilman in Gardena, as a person involved in with young people, he really has left a legacy. And I know for my mom and I, after my dad had his stroke, Moss would come over to our home on a regular basis and really kind of, you know, do some physical therapy with my dad and and walk him around and he was sure that with it with enough work, my dad would one day be able to to walk again. So he really meant a lot to to our family. And my mom and I will be attending the viewing today between 12 and 1:30. But I also wanted to us to adjourn today in the memory of Nancy Holland, who died on March 1st. And she was such an active member of the San Pedro community. She was involved with the Seventh Street School PTA. She was very involved with the First United Methodist Church in San Pedro, the Salvation Army, the San Pedro Bay Historical Society, the Mueller House, and she was involved with the Rotary Club of San Pedro. And she really was, as one friend put it, the Martha Stewart before there was a Martha Stewart. And she really loved gardening and all sorts of homemaking, stitching. And she's survived by her husband of 53 years, John, her sons, David and Don. Every year, John Holland had a law practice in Wilmington and every year during the Wilmington Christmas Parade, as my car would travel down Avalon Boulevard, John and Nancy would come out to the car and, because I always felt like I never ate enough, so they always brought me out a little plate lunch every day during that Christmas Parade, never fails. So she's going to be missed by so many people and we're really sorry to see her go.
Thank you, Ms. Hahn. Mr. Rosendahl.
Yes, I'm sad to say, two elders really of our great community have passed on. One was 97 years old and that's Olga Markus. And those of you might remember that she was one of the co-founders of Women4, which bills itself as the city's oldest women's political action committee. And she died on February 22nd at her home in Westwood of natural causes. She was born Olga Di Renzko on November 4th, 1908, in Denver to Russian immigrants. And in the middle of the Second World War, she got heavily involved in collecting blankets and sweaters and funds for Russians suffering through the bitter winter of the Hitler invasion. Ethel, just an amazing situation here. I don't want to go through all the biography. There was a good one in the LA Times about her. But in 1973, Mayor Bradley nominated Markus to a position on the Fire and Police Pension Commission. She later served with the city employees' retirement system. She's survived by her son, Cohen, Michael Markus, and five grandchildren and six great-grandchildren. Age put an end to her active activity, obviously, as life goes on for all of us, but she made a major mark on women's issues and Women4 and they're still a very active, vibrant group in Los Angeles. May she rest in peace.
Thank you very much, Mr. Rosendahl.
One other, Dr. Sidney Lawrence Power, noted psychiatrist, died on Saturday. He was 88 years old and leaves his wife of nearly 48 years, also a psychiatrist, and three daughters, Judy, Karen, and Lisa, and has also left three grandchildren. Larry Palmer was a flight surgeon in World War II and is the former president of the Southern California Association of Psychiatrists and longtime editor of its newsletter. May he rest in peace.
Thank you very much, Ms. Rosendahl. Mr. Smith?
Thank you, Mr. President. As you heard a while ago, Mr. Mares told us about the passing of his nephew and I know many of you have worked with Candido or certainly all know him. And so on behalf of Mr. Candido, who is a very, very dear friend, personal friend of mine, we ask that we adjourn in memory of his nephew, Ron Gonzalez, who died March 5th, 2006, at the age of 31 in a tragic bicycling accident. Ron Gonzalez was vice principal of Taft Elementary School in Denver, Colorado. He's survived by his daughter, Victoria Gonzalez, mother Gloria Gonzalez, sister Veronica Salazar, and brother Dan Gonzalez. Candido says he was loved dearly and be missed by all of his family. So on Mr. Mares's behalf, I'm...
All members on that, please. Thank you. Mr. Padilla? All members on that, okay. Any other adjourning motions, colleagues? Again, to remind everybody, we will be not in session next week on Tuesday and Wednesday. We will be in Washington DC, so safe travels to everybody. We will next be in session at 9:00 AM on March 17th, next Friday. Madam Clerk, please call the roll. This meeting of the Los Angeles City Council is hereby adjourned.